Start right now, guys, as like Luke joins us, okay? Since there's three of us, so while we do the review of the agenda, give us some time for him to join in. Okay, so I'd like to call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, October 18, 2022, 7:01 PM. Councilmember Solfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing that there's three of us, including myself, we are gonna start the meeting. We're gonna go to item number two, review of the agenda. Mayor and council review the agenda and is part for custom to have the vice mayor read through the agendas to make sure our residents are able to hear the agenda prior. So Jared, go ahead and read the agenda.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Agenda of the work session for Mayor and City Council, City of Mount Rainier, virtual work session, Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 7:00 PM. Number one, call the order. Number two, review of the agenda, the Mayor and City Council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest for discussion. Number three, closed session summary, Vice Mayor, Jared Stoltz, just to read the closed session summary for Thursday, October 6th, 2022, into record. Number, sorry, number four, presentation discussion on municipal net zero plan, the Mayor and Council receive a presentation on the municipal net zero plan. Number five, presentation and discussion on Economic Development Department first quarter report. The Mayor and Council receive a presentation from Mr. Ron Hopkins, Director of Economic Development. Presentation discussion on the Police Department first quarter report, the Mayor and Council receive a presentation from Chief of Police Lynn Wood Austin. Number seven, update and discussion on Spring Park, the Mayor and Council receive an update from the City Manager, Kharish Kamali, and Ms. Rosio Latori, Director of Public Works. Number eight, discussion on residential parking, the Mayor and Council have a discussion on a three-foot buffer of homeowners driveway either side of curb cut. Number nine, our discussion update, the Mayor and discussion, sorry, our discussion update number 22, the Mayor and Council discuss the status of project and reallocation of funds. Number 10, presentation discussion on the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2024 budget. And the Mayor, the City Manager, Kharish Kamali, well, Kharish Kamali, sorry, will present the proposed budget calendar for FY 2024. Number 11, presentation of minutes, City Clerk will present the following minutes, the Mayor and Council. May 18th, 2021 work session, September 20th, 2022 work session, October 6th, 2022 legislative meeting, and number 12, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Jared. Please note that Councilmember Cheswick has joined the meeting. Okay, moving on to, so you guys have heard the review of the agenda, is there anything you'd like to remove from this agenda? Or add?
Nothing, nothing from me.
Valerie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Luke?
Good, thanks.
All right, and Jimmy had, did not let us know on the last meeting that he would not be at the work session, so. All right, perfect, okay, so moving on to item number three, closed session summary, five minutes. Vice Mayor Solfis will read the closed session summary for Thursday, October 6th, 2022 into the record, go ahead, Jared.
Um, closed session summary, sorry. Closed session summary for October 6th, 8:00 PM, that location virtual, we closed it under annotated code, John Provisions, Article 3-305. Those who voted to go into closed session, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Cheswick, Councilmember Jared Stoltz, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Unanimous of elected officials in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Cheswick, Councilmember Jared Stoltz, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Those in attendance, Mayor Selena Demite, sorry, but, sorry. Mayor Selena Benitez, Luke, Councilmember Luke Cheswick, Councilmember Jared Stoltz, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, City Council, Alyssa Lebon. Actions taken to discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects more and more specific individuals, and to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Topics discussed to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body publicized jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects more and more specific individuals, or to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Yep, we closed at 8:45, motion was made by Luke, seconded by Valerie Woodall. Five in favors, or opposed, or abstaining, or absent, and we closed it for, as mentioned earlier, 3-305B1 and 3-305B7.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to item number four, presentation discussion municipal net zero plan, Mayor and Council receive a presentation on the municipal net zero plan. That's a 20-minute, whoever's presenting, you have about 10 minutes, if we stretch it 15, and also five minutes for questions, all right? Who is presenting on this item, and Melissa, you could put it in the chat when it comes to like a five-minute warning, okay? Go ahead.
Mayor. Hello? Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, this is Kharish Kamali, City Manager, so thank you, Mayor and Council. The presentation tonight that we have, it's in regard to the resolution that was passed in January 2021. And the goal was to zero out the emissions from the vehicles and the building by hopefully 2030. To achieve these goals, I've asked Chief and Director of Public Works and co-director to put a plan together, which we did, and presented to the Green Team and Councilmember Luke Cheswick last year. And again, we were asked to present it to Mayor and Council tonight, so I have Chief Austin to start. To start the presentation, and then Rosio will, followed by Chief. And if you have any question for us, we'll be glad to respond.
Kamali, you said this was presented a year ago to the Green Team?
That was, that was presented November, or if I'm not mistaken, December of 2021, yes.
Okay, for future reference, I think this needs to come to us, once the Green Team makes recommendations, like put it up on the agenda. Following the meeting, because the year is a long time for, for the community and the rest of us to, to review it, okay?
Chief, are you there? Yeah, could you please start?
Sure, good evening, everyone. Currently, as a part of our citywide fleet electrification plan, transitioning to zero emissions, the Police Department has 19 vehicles. We recently lost one that was struck by a drunk driver, so we have, we're gonna see what the insurance is gonna do with that vehicle. We have one all-electric vehicle, which is our parking enforcement vehicle. We have three admin vehicles, two detectives' vehicles, one records manager, one spare vehicle currently, and 11 vehicles in patrol. We did order a second hybrid vehicle this year, it came in in June of 2022, and unfortunately, that vehicle had to replace our very first hybrid vehicle, which was struck in front of an officer's home by a driver who veered out of control and hit, and hit our vehicle, and our vehicle was totaled. So currently, we have one hybrid vehicle in our fleet. As we replace vehicles, we're gonna auction the older vehicles and use those funds with possible grant funds from the Maryland Energy Administration or the Maryland Department of the Environment towards purchasing EV or hybrid vehicles. All of our admin and patrol vehicles will be placed, will be replaced with hybrids, reaching seven to eight years of service. Estimating that all vehicles will be hybrid or electric by 2028. We will continue to monitor the advancements in EV technology as it relates to battery range, vehicle size, and charging times. Currently, we estimate that our patrol vehicles travel about 45.73 miles per vehicle per 12-hour shift. Our vehicles, our officers are all in a vehicle take-home program. This will be taken into consideration as we move towards all-electric by 2030. We currently have only one charging station in the rear of the Police Department, which is used for charging a parking enforcement vehicle. The city's gonna have to look at building the infrastructure to support charging stations, for charging stations to support 20-plus electric vehicles. Before we go into code, I wanna mention some of the things we've had occur as we've looked towards the hybrid vehicles in recent months. As our department is still focused on 2030's net zero mandate to eliminate our carbon emission of vehicles, are currently due to the chip shortage, the low production of hybrid police vehicles. Vehicles ordered now will take over a year to be received. So because we're at a dire need for vehicles now, we've found four vehicles. One hybrid vehicle, which would go into production in January, that new production from Ford would be a Ford Explorer Hybrid, and it wouldn't be delivered to September of next year, or currently, we're able to, to purchase three flex-fuel Chevy Traverse. So those vehicles are ready for us within, you know, once Mayor and Council gives us an approval, City Manager to move forward. We're looking at a purchase price of roughly $217,000 for four vehicles. If we lease them, or if we finance them, over five years, those financing costs would be about $29,000. If we purchase them outright, we'd of course save that financing charge, so those are some of the things we wanna, you know, bring forward to you. And the new vehicles are necessary to replace our age V8 gas guzzling vehicles that are constantly stressing the resources of the department. My detective has had one, one, one of the vehicles break down three times in the past few months. So, and currently, we only have one spare vehicle for patrol, and we'll soon be hiring two more police officers for patrol. And of course, we'll take those older vehicles and we'll surplus them at auction, and those proceeds will, will be returned to our city's budget.
Thank you, Chief, Council, the, I'm gonna move forward to three presentations, so if you have a specific question for the Chief or Public Works or Code, can you guys hold them all together at the end, or do you guys would like better to address one at a time?
I'm happy waiting till we get through all three.
Okay. All right, perfect, all right, thank you, Chief, and I definitely do have questions. Moving on to Public Works, Rosio, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening, everyone. So moving on to Public Works, our inventory right now, our goal is to, well, my main goal is to hopefully have a first all-electric trash recycling truck, just as Heightsville has one of their new trash trucks that they're using. The, the department is right now gathering information and working with SBA Electric. I'm sorry, Melissa, if you can scroll down a little bit. Keep going. A little further down, thank you, Melissa. So right now, we're working with SBA Electric, it's a global e-mobility technology company headquartered in California that create electric power, power system technology for urban delivery and distribution fleets. They released several heavy-duty commercial electric vehicles, right now mostly on the West Coast. That, that includes delivery trucks, garbage trucks, dump trucks, you know, all sorts of vehicles. But right now, we're looking into funding, and they're gonna help us to look into the funding opportunities through the MEA program, through their clean fuels incentive program, and that, that provides financial assistance for the purchase of a new converted alternative-fueled fleet vehicle registered in the state of Maryland. Specifically, the program provides funding to support the incremental cost to purchase alternative fuel fleet vehicles or convert our current fleet vehicles to utilize alternative fuel. So they'll be assisting us in the process, once the program becomes available. I think we're gonna be working more towards FY 24 funding, but the incentive amounts are for medium-to-heavy-duty electrical vehicles. So that is pretty much the increase, the increased maximum cap that, through the MEA program, is 50K per vehicle or 80K per vehicle, which we were, we're looking at 80K for the funding. Right now, we do have one older F-350, that's a 2011 F-354 truck that we're hopefully, once we retire, we're definitely, Chief mentioned, looking into hybrid vehicles, so that will be the, hopefully, the next change that will be coming in, into switching over to all-electric.
And Melissa, can we go back to the code compliance for their 2022 current fleet?
Is Alma next on the doctored speaker?
Yes.
Alma, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. So our Mount Rainier code compliance fleet inventory for 2022 consists of two Ford Escape's that were put into use in, back in August of 2019. Our plan is to replace them both with all-electronic vehicles by 2027.
Great, and finally, our commitment as a part of this initiative is to integrate EVs into our fleet of city-owned vehicles per Resolution 01, 2021 Municipal Greenhouse Gas Resolution. That all non-emergency light-duty on-road vehicles owned or leased by the City of Mount Rainier shall be zero emissions by 2027. That all emergency light-duty on-road vehicles owned or leased by the City of Mount Rainier shall be zero emissions by 2030. That all heavy-duty on-road vehicles owned or leased by the city shall be zero emissions by 2035. That all non-road vehicles owned or leased by the city shall be zero emissions by 2035. And that ends our presentation.
Thank you so much, Chief, Rosio, and Alma. I also see Sarah's here, she's the Chair of the Green Team, anything you'd like to add, Sarah?
No, just thank you all so much for this presentation, it was great to see the, the progress being made towards fulfilling the ordinance.
Thank you so much, okay, so Jared, Valerie, Luke, go ahead, the first yours.
Thank you, thank you, folks. I just, a couple additional things to flag for you, there's, you know, obviously, Maryland Energy Administration funding. I did wanna flag that the Inflation Reduction Act, that's the one that Congress just passed, includes a couple other grant opportunities that just wanted to make you aware of. There's, the Environmental Protection Agency will be putting out, well, it's, it's a billion over the lifetime of the program, but it's for class six and class seven trucks, which would include vehicles like a garbage truck, so I just, I can make sure to flag those for you when it comes out, but wanted to make sure you're aware of that, the cost would, application would cover the incremental cost between the diesel and the electric vehicle, and then also all the charging infrastructure and associated project management costs. And then the IRA also included a tax credit, which is actually supposed to be available when IRS develops guidance, open to tax-exempt agencies like, entities, sorry, like municipalities, which would be available for, potentially for charging infrastructure, and then also for a, a, what's called a commercial EV tax credit, it's actually open to a public entity, not just a private one, that could help bring the cost down and ease the, ease some of the budgetary difference we would have as we replace vehicles. So I'm happy to send staff some notes on those federal-level resources as you continue to track the, the Maryland ones. But I just wanted to thank you for this, it's really great to, you know, see, you know, we do have, we don't, we're not, we're not DC, we don't have an enormous fleet, but we do have a decent-sized fleet because of the work you all are doing out in the community and the requirements that, that, that creates for, you know, public safety or trash removal, recycling, and I appreciate your efforts to both meet this ordinance and this goal for the city, and also keep in mind the, you know, may maintain operational continuity.
Thank you.
As we, yeah.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie, go ahead.
Um, thank you, this is exciting news. I guess the two questions I have, one, what is the cost for charging stations? And you said we have to find more locations for them, are you looking all around the city or just near the police station? Yeah.
Preferably, we'll look all around the city. I know at one time, we had one of our EV stations at Public Works, but we actually lost that vehicle in a flood, when we had the flood of, I believe it was 2020.
Yes, true.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, how much do they cost generally for each one?
I don't have that in front of me, I, I remember a figure years ago when I researched it, it was close to 5,000 apiece, but I, I don't recall what, what they're running.
Okay, thank you.
We can provide that information to you.
And of course, there are grants for those, those EV stations as well, and we're gonna definitely look at every grant opportunity for the installation of those EV stations.
You guys could do me a favor, if I only have one person talk at the same time and I heard three different people speak, so even after one of us speaks, if somebody's gonna answer, let us know, especially when that, if, let us know who's gonna speak, so that was not like three or four people speaking at the same time. All right, Valerie, does that answer your questions for right now, and then follow up with the other one?
Yeah, thank you.
So much, Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be helpful, I know there are a lot of commitments made in this to get to sort of net zero by 2030, but Kamali, this is probably for you, as we build out the city budget, and you think about your, your capital budget for a lot of vehicle purchases, I think it would be helpful to have maybe an addendum in the budget that lays out how we get to the, how we get to net zero by 2030, and sort of like, you know, 2023, you purchase X vehicles at Y cost, 2024, it's Z, you know, 2025, 6, 7, all those things are in there so that we have an idea of what the hit is to the budget every year and every future year, just so as we think of like planning activities and as policymakers sort of have to deal with, all right, what can we do this year, what can we do next year? So we know what the trade-offs are in order to make sure that we're still hitting our commitment here to go net zero.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all I had, I appreciate everyone putting the hard work in here and, and helping us get to this point, so thank you.
Thank you, Luke, um, I, I do have a concern when it comes to vehicles, if this report is a year old, have, have all those vehicles that need to be replaced have been ordered yet? My concern is with PD right now, because it's taking minimum of six months and some vehicles over a year to get here. And if they're aging, I don't wanna get ourselves in a very compromising position. So Chief, had those vehicles been ordered yet?
No, ma'am, I just, I'm sorry, was someone else talking? Is that feedback from my mic?
Yeah, go ahead, Chief, or Kamali, whoever.
Well, Chief, let me, let me respond to that. Mayor Chief has requested four brand vehicles, and that was the email to me and the council, but I have to talk to the council because we did not see this one in our budget in FY 23. So somehow, I need to get the approval from Mayor and Council, and then we can move forward.
I, I remember that email has been quite a bit ago, so I would say, please put something in front of us, ideally before the end of the week, so we could start the process of ordering those vehicles, because those vehicles might be coming in until next summer. And if one of the vehicles, if I heard correctly, one of the vehicles has already broken down three different times, is definitely not good, and speaking to other elected officials and also chiefs, we were having a discussion of how delay the chips have created. So if there's a backlog of vehicles that require chips, you know, prior, with the retrofitting and everything that the PD cars have, now the, now it's pushed back to between a year to a year and a half. What we don't want is get ourselves in a position where office, officers do not have vehicles to be able to conduct. So if you could put that in front of us by this week, we definitely need to like move forward and prioritize that one. As for the report, thank you so much for putting everything together. It does help that we have Heightsville next to us, who has been leading when it comes to the trash trucks, so we could see firsthand what it looks like, what. the trash trucks, so we could see firsthand what it looks like, what, um, help they've had or, um, the capabilities for them to, um, be able to charge them. One of the things that we have talked in the meetings with, um, County Executive, um, and even like, um, the government, um, the, the, one of the governors that's running right now, uh, Wes Moore, was the fact that we need, um, infrastructure to be able to meet our goals because the reality is like, we as a city will have to find at least if it's twenty vehicles, right? Charging station, even if it's for half and where we're gonna put them, right? But not only that, if these vehicles happen to be take-home vehicles, you know, it can, um, it's gonna make it very hard if they're just charging on the station here, um, in Mount Rainier. Um, I don't want us to get ourselves in a position where we don't have enough stations where our cars are charging and then we're gonna have to buy, um, buy other kind of vehicle to, um, to have a vehicle on the road, right? So, um, Mr. Kamali, make sure, I know the, um, budget is here. I had requested last year for us to look into the five-year plan, and this is something I know, uh, Mayor Miles and myself have been requesting for years now. Uh, mainly because of what Luke mentioned. If you have a five-year plan budget, you're able to put this information through it so that way we could better assess, uh, what our needs are in the long term. The other thing I am gonna make sure I am asking is that, um, at least twice a year, we review where we are with this program to make sure it doesn't fall on it because two thousand and thirty might seem like it's light years away, but the reality is like, it's, it's not that far, especially with everything that we need to do to get us where we need to be. So I would say like, put in the rotation agenda so that way twice a year we review it to figure out where, where, uh, where we need to be, okay? And this, uh, this said, time's up, but I would like to, um, put at least three more minutes on the clock to open it up to the community. Um, I think one of the members that said, um, that they would like to speak. So can I have a motion to put three more minutes on the clock? Well, five more minutes on the clock.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, objection, abstention? Uh, hearing none. Um, we did had a request from Joseph, uh, former Chair of the Green Team and still active in the Green Team, um, to speak. Joseph, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Benitez, and yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, Mr. Kamali and the Department Heads. First, I'm sorry to hear about the accident. I hope everyone is well. This is a great plan, and I'm glad that everyone is thinking about the long-term challenges with the supply chain and how to make sure it's enacted. Um, and I'm glad to hear about, uh, the ma- the requests from Mayor Benitez that conduct regular reviews. Um, I was also going to point out the IRA tax credits. I'm glad that, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, Stoltz first is thinking, um, I brought those up because those are important opportunity that wasn't available when we last talked. Um, this is a great show of priorities, uh, prioritizing the right vehicles first because the electrification of the non-emergency vehicles will be much easier, and I'm glad to see that the, uh, refuse truck is included as well, given the success that Highesville's had. Um, and so, yeah, I think it's a very great plan. I'm glad to see this aspect of the resolution is going, is, looks like it's going to be implemented. And the only other thing I wanted to add is next up, I hope to see, uh, a plan for having to make our buildings on net zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph, and thank you so much for your work on this and also for your work on the schools to get them to net zero as well, um. So it's, it's a whole collective effort, not just for the city, but the county and the state to move us there. Is there any other member that would like to say anything on, on this plan? Please let us know. Type your name in the screen and is it Jared or Pink who's doing Facebook today, uh, Melissa?
Jared.
All right, thank you so much, Melissa. All right, so Jared, anything on Facebook? All right, perfect. And I see nothing in the chat. So thank you so much. Um, Mr. Kamali, do you have any questions regarding any of the directions given today?
No, thank you, Mayor, and we have the proposal ready. But, uh, however, I will be communicating with the council and see how you guys wanna meet, whether we wanna have a special work session for this because today's, uh, today's Tuesday. So, and tomorrow I'm not in the office because I still have, you know, some lower back problem. So I'll be there on Thursday and Friday. How do you want me to proceed with that?
So submit whatever information you have so that we could review it and then we'll move forward. It is because if it's a budget amendment we need to do, then that'll be the next step.
Definitely.
Or if it's a treaty session to do something, then we'll figure out. But we need to have the information in front of us to be able to know what the next step is and and I worked with the team to, to get those answers. So the sooner you could get it in front of us, the sooner we could give you direction. And if we have to schedule a meeting to start working a process of, like, let's say in this case, a budget amendment, we move forward with that, um, and, and for future, something like that is, is in the plate. Um, you know, add it to your, uh, report and let us know as soon as possible so that we could give you the right steps to move on it, um, because we had originally like a, uh, legislative session for today. Had that been presented in the, um, in the report two weeks ago, we, we probably will have kept the legislative session so that we could admit it in approval today. So let us know so that we could work on it because, um, if it's taking at least six months to it, it is gonna, I need to make sure, you know, we also need to make sure that it falls into this budget. If not, it's gonna fall into next year's budget into FY twenty-five, and that might be too late. All right, thank you, Mr. Kamali.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Chief Alma Rosio also for your work on it, and the Green Team, um, is very appreciated. Okay, perfect. Um, and moving on to the next presentation. Presentation Discussion Economic Development Department First Quarter Report. The Mayor and Council received a presentation from Mr. Ronald Hopkins, Director of Economic Development. Um, Ron, uh, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, colleagues and friends. Uh, the Economic Development First Quarter Report is as follows. So as you may be well aware, U-Source Construction was awarded the facade improvement contract on Rhode Island Avenue. We're making a lot of progress. Uh, we're working diligently with MUTC to expedite the process as well. We look at an anticipated completion date of December, no later than December, but as you can see, they're out there every day trying to make as much progress as possible while we have good weather. Um, and there's some pictures. Uh, Melissa, can you show the pictures? There's a before and after picture of the Police Department. So that's what it looked like in the past. I know everybody loved the gray, but you know, we had to, a new design, so now we have a beautiful beige design, which was actually created from neighborhood design centers. And so that's what it looks like now. It's almost complete except for some pictures in the windows that the Chief and Officer Sims, Lieutenant Sims submitted to, um, to the contractors, so they'll be uploaded shortly. So that's, um, that's with the facade improvement project. Um, I'm also happy to report that, um, we have Ms. India Shelton. She owns a business, Bella the Brand. She's an international fashion designer, and she was also a designer in residence with Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council located in, uh, Deep Park thirty-three eleven, where my office is located, as well as, um, Gateway Media Arts Lab. So she has leased the bottom level of Dr. Gupta's office building. Um, she has the entire floor and she's working diligently with other artists and to make that a profitable venture, she's very happy with that. Um, so initially, we also looked at, um, having a family support center, Ms. Erica Serrano of Luna. And she was gonna actually lease the street-level portion of Dr. Gupta's office building that first, but due to design, uh, challenges, um, we find out that didn't work out. But however, I'm working with her to find another location within the city so she could bring that family support center into the City of Mount Rainier. Uh, my CDVG grant, micro-enterprise grant, we have eighteen websites for our Mount Rainier businesses. They, they consist of brand-new websites in addition to upgrades, and we have three more to complete, and they should be done by the end of this month. Um, working with Employee Prince George's, a lot of, um, our businesses like Penny Royal Station, the Water Hole Nine Company have had challenges with recruiting employees. So through the Rapid Empu- Employment Program through Employee Prince George's, we're working with them to get them employees, and each new employee that they hire that's been on unemployment, they actually receive fifteen thousand dollars apiece, right, for each new employee? And now it's open to municipalities as well. So if we have, I know we had a job fair last week, Friday. So if we looking to hire any new employees, uh, we should take advantage of this program. Let's see, what else? Okay, so now, at risk, um, so the IFG group hasn't responded uh, to numerous emails and mass communications with regards to putting up the commercial billboards, addressing the issues of the grass on their property, as well as they may be subject to a vacant property tax. So Co-Compliance has issued citations on their behalf, and I don't know when the court date is and things like that, but that's the progress with, uh, thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island Avenue. Secondly, um, Sweet Natural, they've closed business to actual residents and customers on their thirty-fourth Street property. Um, they're using it now, I think, just to manufacture goods to like wholesale out to like Whole Foods and different entities like that, but they're not officially in business. In fact, their, uh, lease has been, they haven't been paying their lease, and they have a for-sale sign or for-lease sign on their property as well. And they haven't responded to any emails as well. Um, let's see. I applied for a lot of grants, you know, I submitted all my quarterly reports. We're still waiting on approval for our thirty-fourth Street facade improvement grants that currently outstanding about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in facade improvement grant money. We're looking for thirty-fourth Street, an additional ten thousand dollar grant from, for a Main Street Improvement Program. And I guess as summation, I attended the IEDC, that's the International Economic Development Conference in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. The title was Turning Disruption Into Innovation and Opportunity and a networking event with, uh, Prince George's Economic Development Corporation and the Maryland Black Chamber of Commerce. So that's my report. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you so, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins. Um, I'm gonna start with Luke, followed by Jared and Valerie.
Um, so I just wanna start off in thanking you, Ron, coming forward here, um, and presenting your quarterly report. This is something that, um, I mean, Mary, you'll remember this, when we first passed this legislation, um, just mandating quarterly reports, our hope was that we would get, you know, eventually department heads to come and speak, uh, to, about these reports with the public. Um, and that was, you know, two, three city managers ago. So, um, just so happy that this is happening right now. Um, this is really great. It's really important, Ron, for you, um, for everyone else too. Um, but so much of your, what you do is sort of, you know, customer-facing in a sense. You've got these businesses out there, um, and a lot of folks are interested in what's going on, and this can showcase, you know, a lot of the good work that you're doing on this front. Um, because we get a lot of these questions from taxpayers, what's going on? What are we doing to kind of build up um, our business core? And, um, a lot of this, um, demonstrates the work that we're doing on that front. So just really appreciate, um, all the department heads coming forth and, and giving these reports out. And Ron, for your report today, I just really appreciate it. Um, yeah, I mean, I think the big one, I'm glad you flagged it as a risk for us, is the two, um, with thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island and Sweet Natural. Um, you know, obviously, everybody wants to see thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island developed. Um, so figuring out what's going on there is just really important. Um, I know you're gonna keep to bug them, and please keep bugging them until we find out what's going on here because there seems to be some, some missing piece of information that's not getting to the city from them, and, you know, we need to get to the bottom of that because for us, if we need to figure out, you know, is there, is there sort of a, a Plan B? What happens if they're not prepared to do anything? Do we bring in the county? Um, do we bring in any other developers? Like, what, what, what then, what's the next step there? So sort of planning for that, um, Plan B, I think is important to start thinking about. Um, um, as we think about what, what, what can happen if the worst-case scenario is, I think we need to start making plans for that. Um, the Sweet Natural thing is disappointing, um, as well, I think there as well. Just keep reaching out. Uh, maybe letting them know, you know, we have an economic, you know, incentive fund, um, to the extent that they wanna build out at another location, or just to find out what they're doing and how we can help. You know, I'd hate to lose that, even if all they're doing is wholesaling now, um, which I'm sure they're making a lot of money, um, selling their products at Whole Foods and the like, um, you know, be helpful to know how we can still maintain their business here. Um, and, um, so I have no questions, just good work, and, and, and for the ones that are at risk, just keep on finding what you can find out. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jared and Valerie.
Yep. I'll just, uh, go ahead and echo some of Luke's comments. Ron, I thank you so much for the work you're doing. As Luke mentioned, a lot of this is, um, you know, a lot of your work is very, very externally facing in that our, our residents and other folks that business members, other folks in the city are, see it daily. So it's really, um, it's really good for everyone on the call, whether they're watching it now, watching it later, to hear about the great work that you're doing, um, how you're bringing investments and bringing resources, especially from outs, you know, outside the city, from grant, state grants, from other opportunities to help uplift and, um, support our business district and not only just, you know, bringing new businesses into the community, but also uplifting our existing ones. I'm really, you know, really happy with the work we're doing on the facade program on Rhode Island Avenue. Things are looking great. I mean, I'm, you know, the support with, um, uh, you know, getting, uh, a lot of our businesses, which you know, may not, maybe not be as technologically savvy, but offer great services a lot of times, and I'm sure you know this, a good sign, and a web presence goes a long way and to kind of bring it in, new, new, yeah, you know this, I don't need to tell you that, but it, it really does, it really does help, especially with some of the demographic transitions and, uh, sorry, the, you know, changes that are happening in our community is, uh, folks come in and sometimes, you know, may initially overlook, um, some of our new businesses. This stuff is, is really helpful. Uh, to, um, to just, uh, not con- just to echo kind of Luke's, Luke's thoughts on, um, the thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island, obviously, this is, uh, you know, it's, it's disappointing there. They've, uh, you know, are not kind of moving with the expeditiousness they originally stated. Um, I know we are leveraging every tool possible, including the vacant property tax. Uh, I do agree that let's please stay on top of this. Um, if there's a way at some point if we decide to, um, you know, as Luke mentioned, bring in the county, kind of, you know, refocus some outside external attention on this really key gateway property, um, for not just the city, but the entire county. Um, the, uh, and the last, there's two real quick questions was, um, I'm, I'm assuming the thirty-fourth Street facade is a, exactly what is a thirty-fourth Street version of the Rhode Island? Uh, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, so, and I, so I won't ask any more questions about that, and I hope I'll cross our fingers that we're successful on those. Um, for the, uh, the Main Street Improvement, could you just speak really quickly about what that is? The dollar amounts are quite a bit different, so curious what that covers.
So that covers signage. Basically, it covers signage for the downtown area. So that's what it is. Uh, it had extra funds last year, and it's just a ten thousand dollar grant for signage. Like wayfinding signs and things like that as well. So that's what that is.
Okay, and i- if we're unsuccessful, I don't know what the timing is for all those unsuccessful. I definitely think that's something that we should consider. Um, yeah, there's other, uh, other grant opportunities we're looking at, because I know, uh, wayfinding is something we hear. I certainly hear a lot about, um, in the city, but, uh, really good report. Uh, thank you for all the updates. It's exciting to see such movement. Uh, and thank you for being out there and, uh, being a champion for our community.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you, Valerie.
Um, yeah, well, thank you, um, for this report. I think it's very helpful to have quarterly reports from economic development for our community. Um, I guess, I mean, having at-risk businesses that sit right at the corner of Rhode Island and, and e- um, eastern, you know, that's like the front door to the county, um, on Route One. So I definitely think we should bring in county support, um, and maybe even go further up into the state to make sure that we're pushing for the IFG group to really either develop it or sell it and get some other developer in there. Um, I think that's key. Um, so hopefully we'll keep pushing on that. I think Sweet and Natural, same thing. We need to make sure that we're getting to the bottom of what's happening there. Um, and that the thirty, if they're truly out of thirty-fourth Street, that we have a plan for bringing in a new business to that location um, so that we don't have pockets and holes of, you know, closed businesses next to open businesses. That's just not a good thing. Um, so we should definitely come up with a plan. So hopefully, at the next quarterly report, you can have like a plan for, for bringing in, you know, um, making sure thirty-fourth Street stays vibrant and, and with lots of good businesses. Um, I also think it would be helpful to start planning and thinking about how we connect the Otis Street Arts, the thirty-fourth and Rhode Island Avenue and Barnum Street business areas in the city, and making sure that they're cohesive to some extent. Um, so that's something I'd like to see in the future. Um, um, I think it's great that you've applied for six hundred and fifty thousand for, um, for facade improvements. I hope we get that every, every penny there. Um, um, I guess one question I have, I know you have a business event. I think it's tomorrow, is that right? Um, how many local businesses have signed up for that? Um, yeah, how many local businesses have signed up for that?
I don't know how many local businesses because, um, the Maryland Black Chamber of Commerce is controlling that link. But I know we have forty-five actual participants registered. So I don't know how many local businesses they are, and also we anticipate, so originally we have fifty slots, right? So I increased it to sixty-five because we may have walk-ins and cancellations as well. So we anticipate individual businesses- So we anticipate individual businesses coming as well to attend the event tomorrow night. But I don't know the exact number of local businesses.
Okay. Awesome. Well, hopefully you can, uh, each one of them can see a little bit of Mount Rainier and learn a little more, come in, so it's good. I think those are all my questions. I mean, I, I do think the main focus for me is really getting Thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island Avenue, you know, figured out and applying all the pressure we need to, as well as making sure Thirty-Fourth Street stays vibrant. So, um, keep working on those things. I look forward to the next report.
Thank, I just wanna add something as well. So I did have a meeting with David Imuji last week. He's the president and CEO of Prince George's Economic Development Corporation. And we brought up Thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island Avenue and some Plan B options as well. So I'll be able to share that with you at a later day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Ron, for putting this together. And for also doing at times like a lot of handholding, when it comes to some of the, uh, some of the newer businesses and some of the business that have been here. But also like finding resources for them. I was, um, I was very happy to hear how many, um, how people took advantage of the e-commerce training. But also, uh, the training went down to helping them how to pitch, looking into their logos, like informing them, putting their message out. So it was very like, um, having a business one-on-one that I know as a business owner, you don't get that. Usually like, you know, you have a dream, you open your business and you face various challenges. So allowing for them to have those tools to be able to not just survive, but thrive is very important. And definitely when it came to facade improvement, you source, it's, um, I talked to their, their owner. Wonderful person. She gets our city, she gets our residents, great communication, you know, and, and I'm definitely happy to see that. Um, her whole team are, are very cautious of making sure that the businesses are heard. And they're following through with everything that needs to be. So definitely good selection. As far as the grants, uh, thank you for like making sure that you go after every single little bit. Because I think sometimes the assumption, and this goes for all the directors, you guys are very good at this. I think sometimes the assumption is like, we pay X amount of tax and it covers everything. But in order to get the city, uh, you know, where it's at right now or continues to be, we have leverage as much as we can on grants to make sure we're able to expand the things that we could do and do a lot of things in real time. Because right now, as we heard from, um, our city manager in previous meetings, right? The supply and demand chain of, um, it, it's part of the things that worries, like, you know, a couple of people as well. Because there's only so much they could do, right? But ability to be able to do it in real time allows for us to keep like the cost as close as the estimate and move it forward and, and maximize. But, um, so the county, um, and the state does know that we're having a problem with Thirty-two. Part of the things that I do in meeting like with other entities, um, at various levels is that. Conversated about, um, what some of the challenges that we've seen in our city. And if we need help later on, they already aware of the situation. Uh, the vacant lot, um, the vacant lot, um, you know, new assignation. This changes their taxes to two dollars and fifty cent for a hundred square of a set foot. So that definitely is gonna be a, a shock. And they know what it is, because, um, thank you, Ron, for that sending in the amount. I, I thank you also code for sending the amount of what that would look like. So there cannot be shocked that, uh, what that, uh, what that amount will be an estimate, cause that was given to them. So they know what it is if they choose not to do much. So the conversations with, uh, the other entities about the challenges that we're having have already started. Right? So that they're not, you know, caught, caught off guard. The other thing is like regarding the attend, the, the PGCEDC. Thank you, Ron, for making sure a lot of our businesses were there, uh, talking to the business owners. Some of them was the first time they had ever been invited to something like that. And it's good for them to also be acknowledged and meet other business owners outside the city. But also give them the opportunity to like highlight their city and network and meet other people that are interesting and, and coming in and learning more about Mount Rainier. So I was very interested to see, like, some of them have never been to an event as such, and they were very happy to be there. So Mount Rainier came in strong. So I, I was very happy to see that. All right. So thank you, Ron, for all the work and look forward to getting, you know, hopefully positive response for all those grants. And, and pushing, you know, the right buttons to make sure that, that happens. Okay? All right. So do we have a question from the community? Please type it on the, type your name on the chat, I could call upon you. Anything on Facebook? All right, perfect. Um, hearing none and neither. And, um, I will say, yes, it's great to have you guys in our rotation. Just because, um, I know, I think it was around the time, maybe a year after, uh, the core reports got enacted, you guys used to come to present. Um, you guys were on rotation as well. So it's good to see that back again, because it's great for the residents to hear directly from you guys, all the great things you guys are doing, cause there's a lot. So, thank you, Ron. All right, moving on to the next, um, item. Presentation, added number six, thank you, Melissa. Presentation, discussion, the police department first quarter report, twenty minutes. American Council received a presentation from Chief of Police Lingwood Alston. Uh, chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, everyone. I'm pleased to present our quarterly report covering July, August, and September of this year. Uh, in July, Corporal Brozki from our team attended the first-line supervisor training. And that class helps, helps new supervisors in techniques and strategies to become effective leaders. In August, uh, we were happy to host Joel Patterson. He's the chief of the Public Integrity Unit from the State's Attorney's Office. With the new, uh, legislation and, uh, police reform that's been passed in Annapolis, it was important that our officers be presented with the new use of force legislation and how it relates to them and the performance of their duties within our community. Our other partner agencies from Cotters City, Colmore Manor, and Capitol Heights are also, uh, present, uh, and invited to this training. And as we are continuing to look at, um, so many ways we can de-escalate situations, there's a new training device that Lieutenant Sims and Detective, uh, First Class Ruffin have been come instructors on, which is called the Bowler Wrap. And this device actually, uh, uh, it, uh, pretty much makes it impossible for an assailant, an armed assailant to move. This is a, a less lethal, uh, device. Many of our agencies, uh, throughout the county have gone toward, I've seen quite a few, uh, of the demonstrations. And they are effective in limiting the mobility of suspects. So we're looking to purchase eight of those, and we're also looking to get grant money to purchase another twelve, so a total of twenty. Acting Corporal Harriet attended instructor lesson, uh, plan development. And that enhances his ability to construct and implement lesson plans designed for our agency. And we're very proud of our police explorers, as you saw in previous meetings. Our explorers post nineteen-ten, uh, we are now, as of today, thirty-three members strong. In August, Officer Cruz took four of our police explorers to a one-week camp. The twenty-twenty-two Explorers Adventure Camp was a one-week leadership conference. And it taught the explorers valuable life lessons in team building and learning to work with others. The leadership conference also pushed explorers' motto, which is not to force the explorers into a life of policing, but to teach them to become the future leaders in our communities. And I saw a lot of that when we hosted our Public Safety Night. I actually briefed them after that night. And I wanted to thank them for the teamwork that I, that, that I saw. And recently, Mayor Benitez, uh, was president, and she recognized the four explorers that went to this one-week camp as well. We appreciate that. Uh, in September, uh, we had one of our officers attend field training. And that, and that certifies him as a field training, training officer to instruct new police officers once they come on board with us. Uh, Officer Sellers, uh, attended the Fourth Annual Family Justice Center Collaborative Communities Conference in Greensboro, North Carolina. And all of her, uh, accommodations were paid for as a part of one of our grants through the Office of Violence Against Women. We're in partnership with the Prince George's County, uh, Family Justice. Uh, and that purpose was to assist communities with planning, developing, strengthening, and expanding local, uh, collated, multiple agency work in domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, child abuse, and elder abuse. This year, uh, this quarter, our officers spent over three hundred and two hours on foot patrol in our communities with focus on both elementary schools, our businesses, and our neighborhoods. Uh, also this quarter, I attended a three-day, eighteen-hour course at the Maryland, uh, Police Training Commission. And that course was, uh, Community Policing, Improving Police Efficacy and Building Trust. And it was a great program, and it, uh, related a lot on our partnerships with the community, uh, the organizational transformation that we must undergo in order to problem-solve within our communities and to have those positive partnerships. And that talks about our, uh, partnership, our philosophy, organizational strategy that promotes partnership between people and the police based on the premise that both the community and police must work together to identify, prioritize, solve contemporary problems such as crime, drugs, fear of crime, social and physical disorder, overall neighborhood decay, with a goal of improving overall quality of life in our area. Over the past few months, uh, we've had a few issues in the city with, uh, neighbor complaints, uh, neighbors not getting along. Sometimes these issues, um, weren't actual police matters. Sometimes they were related to, uh, code issues. Sometimes they were related to, um, just misunderstandings. Uh, Lieutenant, uh, Acting Lieutenant Callaway reached out to the Prince George's County Community Conference and Program. And there's actually a restorative justice program that helps neighbors kind of reset and get back to possibly a good time when they were getting along. And I'm happy to say that, uh, they've reached out to our neighbors. Hopefully our neighbors are being responsive, and hopefully we can resolve some of the issues, um, you know, on those levels. Because many times, as, as police, we're called upon to solve many of the ills of our community, uh, mental health, neighbors not getting along. Sometimes it has, has not reached a criminal, uh, level where we need to step in. But we're looking to find any programs that are out there that can help, help those neighbors before it gets to that point. We're happy to say that National Night Out, August fourth, we had a great turnout. Uh, we thank everybody for their attendance. Was another opportunity for us to collaborate with the community. And one of the biggest things that I say probably on a weekly basis is I want our team to humanize the badge. I want our public to see us as humans. That way they feel that we're more approachable. They can share information with them. We can share, um, you know, great times with them, and we're also there as they need us. We're happy to be a part of the city's very first Latino Heritage Celebration on September seventeenth. Officers were there to assist, uh, with traffic control as well. So, uh, excellent time again. And on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, our, as my team tells me, it was our largest public safety night in the history of, of our city. We were so pleased to see so many members of our public come out. We had over thirty law enforcement partners show out. And that, that says a lot. I mean, we, we, we're developing a great network of partners throughout our state, throughout our, our, our county. I want to thank the aviation from Prince George's County and Maryland State, State Police, who brought in two helicopters for us. And, um, you know, those things, they, they, our community, our children who were able to make it out, uh, these were memorable times for them. And there's actually a video, we're not gonna play that video, it'll probably take a while. But that's actually one of the helicopters taking off. I wanna get to our quarterly stats. Uh, this quarter, um, there were eight hundred and sixty-eight parking citations, three hundred and thirty traffic stops, uh, five hundred and eighty-eight citations, nine, eight hundred and ninety-eight warnings, and actual thirty arrests. Our total calls for service that actually came in through dispatch this quarter were one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, uh, calls and requests for services. And there below, I'm not gonna read all our, uh, part one offenses, but there, those are there for you to see as well, which are total of sixty-five, what they call part one offenses, uh, which are part of the Uniform Crime Report that we, we have. A major arrest we had was in there, and you may have seen this previously, but in the early morning of July twenty-eighth at approximately three forty-nine, Mount Rainier Police Officer Sellers, Officer Harden, Corporal Kaplan were on patrol and observed a suspicious occupied vehicle at Allison and Thirty, Thirtyer Street. While officers approached the vehicles, they could smell the strong odor of marijuana. The driver was found to be under influence. The searcher, the driver and vehicle revealed a large amount of marijuana, crack cocaine, Oxycontin pills, estimated, with the estimated street value over forty thousand dollars. Officers also recovered four loaded handguns. One was a ghost gun. Two guns were stolen from North Carolina. Officer seized three thousand sixty-four dollars in cash related to the drug arrest. The suspect was transported to the Department of Corrections and was charged accordingly. One of our top priorities right now is officer recruitment and retention. Our officers, you may hear me say it from time to time, are some of the best in the county. And I, and I'm gonna tell you, some of the best in the state of Maryland. The other chiefs comment on them quite often. Um, some of these departments are able to offer them much more than we offering. We found out last week, Green Belt is offering.
Oh, so opening the mic right now. Chief, are you there still?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
You froze, chief.
We lost you for a moment.
Oh, no. What, did you hear about the pay increases that our officers are being offered from the other municipalities? Did I, did you hear that part?
We just heard it right now as you said it.
Okay, all right. Uh, let me start over. Recruitment and retention are so important to us. We have some of the best officers here in the state, in the county. And I'll say that time and time again. We don't have the many negative issues that other departments have. So our officers are highly sought after. Um, they've personally come to me and they, they really wanna stay here. They love our city. But Green Belt is offering them, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar signing bonus to go over there with an increased salary, with many of the other benefits that we currently have as well. Piceville is offering them to leave us fifteen thousand sign, signing bonus and increased pay. So I want us to remain as competitive as we can. I'm happy to announce that we have filled our Parking Enforcement Officer position. We're currently looking to fill, uh, a few more positions. One is the Social Services Coordinator. Um, that's such an important, uh, position within our community. It does so much as far as outreach to our community, uh, connecting our residents with so many, uh, of the resources that they so need. Four of our CIT, uh, which is Crisis Intervention Trained Off, Team Trained Officers, have been feeling, have been, uh, stepping in and feeling some of those voids, feeling some of those voids of not having a Social Services Coordinator. They've been getting people to the mental health, uh, centers and following up and, and getting them, uh, the right, the correct resources. Uh, we're also looking to fill two patrol officer positions and one administrative lieutenant position. Uh, we were, uh, present at the, uh, job fair, um, this past, um, Friday from ten to three. Next, uh, finally, I'm gonna go into our Criminal Investigative Division report. Was put together by, um, Detective First Class Ruffin. These are some of the, um, studies, case, uh, statuses that he's put together for this quarter. There was a sexual assault. The case was, was closed. Um, the suspect has been identified. Another one on August seventeenth, uh, the status of this case is open. I do wanna say something about these sexual assaults. They were, uh, known to the, these perpetrators were known to the victims. There's a break-in report, uh, on August nineteenth. That status of that case is open. There was a break-in in progress. Uh, that suspect was arrested on the scene, and that case is closed. Another break-in report on September- Another break-in report on September the eighth, that case, uh, the status of that case is closed. There was a warrant service. Status of that case is closed. There's a child abuse, uh, case on September twenty-ninth. That case is pending charges. There's a first degree assault, uh, case, and that's pending charges as well from September twenty-eighth. Uh, last quarter in our report, uh, we featured Mr. James Gregory. Uh, we were looking for him. We had pending charges of strong arm robbery, theft and assault. Uh, this, this quarter, we're happy to report that Mr. Gregory has been arrested. Uh, that's on our next page. Um, he actually assaulted the attendant in the S, SK convenience store at thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-fourth Street. Uh, next section is our speed cameras. This quarter, we issued fifteen thousand speed camera violations. Um, a total of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars was collected by our vendor. The total that was wired to our city this quarter was two hundred and fifteen thousand, which three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is our net this quarter for automated speed violations. Um, our city recently signed a collections agreement with Municipal, Municipal Collections of America to pursue an estimated two point four million in outstanding speed camera debt. Uh, Municipal Collections of America will also pursue approximately two point eight million in outstanding parking citations debt that have been owed to the city for years. Uh, next page, uh, Melissa, you can go up one page, please. Um, this is the FY twenty-two SMS one report that's required to be to sit, to be submitted to the Maryland Comptroller's Office for every active automated speed camera program in the state of Maryland. As you see, um, we entered the grocery receipts in the top line. Um, the total amount collected in fines, the cost of implementing, implementing, uh, the program, uh, the adminis, the administr, administration of the program or administering the speed camera, which is the payments to our officers who work as a part of that program. And it shows the net amount, which, um, the program brought in. So I believe we estimated FY twenty-two, we were going to bring in five hundred thousand. And we actually brought in seven hundred and sixty thousand, so approximately two hundred and sixty thousand over. So we owed to sit, we owed back to the state of Maryland, uh, zero. If we would have gone over, um, ten percent of the city's budget and the cost implement, we'd have had to pay money to the state of Maryland. Or actually remit money to the state of Maryland. Okay, we'll go over to grants now. Uh, the first grant is our state aid for police protection. Uh, we estimate it this year, we were going to receive nine, ninety-eight thousand. Uh, we received, uh, a lot more. We received two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Uh, we applied for a grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, uh, five thousand to help with National Night Out. Uh, five thousand for Public Safety Night and five thousand for our youth explorers. And we, we were awarded all three grants, which is great. Uh, our, we have the state, uh, bond bill, uh, for our basement. And just to give you a status update on our basement project, uh, that RFP is at, uh, our attorney's office, Alyssa's office. She's, uh, looking through that now. I think she required uh, one more document from our architect so we can get that RFP out and start getting a contractor in here to complete that basement, uh, project long overdue. Uh, we also have the U.S. Department of Justice Cops Hiring Grant, uh, awarded for a hundred and twenty-five thousand was used to hire one officer and pay over three years. Um, we also in partnership for U.S. Department of Justice Grant Officer of Woman Violence Against Women's Grant. Uh, and we partner with Prince George's County, PD Blainsburg, Bowie, Bowie State University, Officer of Sheriff, Cottie City, uh, the Community Crisis Center and Synergy Family Services. Uh, and lastly, we have the U.S. Department of Justice Cops Grant where we partnered uh, with, uh, Hyattville City PD, Brentwood PD. And those funds will allow for a joint municipal program to hire one licensed mental practitioner to respond to, with our CIT certified officers to the scene of any extreme behavioral health crisis calls. So that ends my, uh, quarterly report.
Thank you, Chief, so much. I'm gonna go open up the, for our council members. Um, Valerie, followed by Jared, followed by Luke.
Um, thank you. Um, it looks like you've been busy. Um, I'm, um, especially encouraged by the number of grants you're getting, um, and funding that's coming in for various programs that you guys are doing. Um, I think, um, I guess my main questions are, um, first of all, one thousand nine hundred ninety-four calls in a quarter. Um, I wonder how that stacks up to other communities as well as how it stacks up to our city. Um, in past years, um, you know, there were in twenty twenty sixteen thousand calls, I think, um, for service, um, over the course of a year. Um, so I just wonder how, you know, what's, what that's about. Um, I know I had asked you about the dispersion of activity in terms of criminal activity, um, and calls for service, um, because I think there's a lot, um, a lot of calls kind of in the northern area of our city, um, um, you know, near, near inner manner and other places like that. Um, so I just wanted you know, remind you about that. And then, um, my other question is, um, are these reports going to be posted on the website? Um, the last time we had, um, um, like crime statistics put up there, it was in twenty twenty. So I know you have the weekly reports that go out every week on the website, but I'm wondering if there's a bigger picture, broader picture that could be shared with the community on the website for the city.
So one second, Council, we have run out completely out of time. Can you guys go ahead and put at least ten minutes on the clock?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Oh, sorry, seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Objection, attention. Melissa, go ahead and put ten more minutes on the clock. Sorry, Valerie. Uh, Melissa, like flashed me like while you were in the mid-sentence, I didn't want to cut you off. Go ahead, Chief, uh, the first yours.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Valerie. Um, that is something we can, we can do, certainly do is look to put those crime stats. So at a glance, you can really see what's going on. So I'll go back and look at what we have for twenty twenty and, and and the activities that are going on based on wards, because even after your request a few days ago, uh, I'm actually looking more towards technology and better ways of us reporting. Because right now and what the city has done and the police department has done for many years is done everything manually, other than what we have in the RMS, uh, systems that are governed by the county police. So we're going to look at how we can, you know, put up some pretty state, state-of-art reporting to where we link our actual daily activity reports and the narratives there into our weekly reports. And then from the weekly reports, able to gauge analytics by activities, by the number of activities that, by type in the areas of the city where they occurred as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, that's great news. Thank you. Um, yeah, the more, um, the more we can get that to be automated and kind of working toward, um, you know, so we can get a real clear picture of criminal activity and, and calls for service and make sure that we're addressing those areas is really important to me. So thank you. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jared, Luke?
Yeah, no, this is, um, really helpful, Chief. Um, and I just wanted to, um, ask you a couple. And so thank you for laying all this out. It's really great to see all the work you're doing. Collaborations with other organizations, um, other, other neighboring cities. Um, I did have a, just a quick question for you. I know the Social Service Coordinator, we've had that um, open for a while, I guess. Curious, um, you know, what we can do to, what we can do to get that fulfilled. I know that's been a, it's been a resident request, um, not necessarily knowing where to point folks to. And, uh, we kind of love to know what you think next steps are in trying to fill that or what might, uh, what might be, what, you know, what are some of the barriers?
Yeah, thanks, Jared. Uh, we have made that a priority. Uh, staff having varied duties and, uh, that's presented an issue for us. Um, not trying to weigh all the heat on one person trying to do the hiring, but we've opened the portal so that I do have assistance from, from our team and allowing us to sift through the resumes that we've received, uh, and to get interviews set up soon.
Okay. No, that's, that's, uh, helpful as well. Can you scroll back to the first page or, or whoever's entering the screen? You had, um,
Melissa.
Melissa, sorry. Thank you. Uh, the site stops versus citations.
So like two pages.
Yeah, two, two pages back. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, two pages back. Thank you, Selena. By the way, back, oh, back, back to the, like, the first. Oh, uh, yeah. Okay, yep, thank you. Um, sorry, just, just so I understand, the traffic stops versus what's the difference between a stop and a citation? I was a little confused here in a warning.
Okay, sure. Uh, a stop is the actual incident of pulling the car over. And during that incident of pulling that car over, um, there, a warning may be issued or a citation may be issued.
Okay. Oh, oh, so the, the traffic stops number is in the citations number or the warnings number would include the three thirty inside of the, okay, okay, that's.
Three thirty encompasses everything, yes.
Okay.
That's the number of actual, uh, vehicles stopped, yes.
And then other question on the parking citations, are those, just understand, are those concentrated, like mostly in our commercial uh, metered areas? Are those issued to folks for, uh, inappropriately parking in residential areas? What's the, what's the mix there?
I don't have a mix, um, but it's a variety. And as I read the reports and as they come in, and we can get you those analytics as well. But it is definitely a mix. Um, our new parking enforcement officer, uh, who came on a few months back, uh, she's been pretty, uh, agile out in our, uh, commercial areas and wherever we have our meters throughout our city as well. Also, our patrol officers are out uh, throughout the night, uh, illegal parking, uh, things of that nature, uh, and they are citing vehicles, uh, throughout our city.
Okay. And then, uh, last question, you mentioned, uh, like four officers have the crisis intervention uh, training, which is, um, you know, I guess in the, in the interim, while we're looking to fill the social services, it's kind of been a helpful asset. Is it usually that you have at least one officer or try to have like at least one officer on per day or how, what's the distribution of that like?
Yes, they're balanced throughout the shift, the twelve-hour shifts. That's one thing we're able to do is, is have those CIT officers balanced. Uh, we're looking to get their entire, uh, staffing of officers as we bring more on board. Because we all get this CIT training in the police academy and we get it, uh, ongoing and in-service training. But we actually want each of our officers to have the forty-hour certification that each of these officers have had. Uh, a, actually, Antarctica County, uh, their chief has opened his training up to our team for free. So we, we've been sending our officers as we can.
Now, that's great. That sounds like, it sounds like a worthy training, a certification for I think any officer. So, uh, yeah, to the extent you're able to, we're able to take advantage of other municipalities and get all of our staff that training, uh, not just a handful. That, that'd be, uh, certainly something I love to see. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Chief. Luke?
Chief, thank you so much for this presentation. Really appreciate all the work you and your staff do, um, day in and day out. Um, it's sort of like, uh, in a sense, it's a little bit of the opposite of kind of Ron and that, you know, you're very customer safe facing, but um, only when something goes wrong do kind of, you know, people spotlight attention on you. Um, and, you know, a lot of times you don't get attention for all the good you do. Um, and so no attention is kind of good attention. And, um, I just hope residents understand and I know they appreciate all the work you do, um, and, and your officers do. So just really appreciate this. And, um, yeah, just keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you, Lord. Thank you.
So Chief, um, thank you for this information. Um, I'm fully conscious that you don't have lieutenant administrators, so it's a lot of this burden is being put on you and your team. Uh, so, um, I did notice that it's still open that position. Um, also, thank you so much for stepping in when it comes to the social service credit. I know endlessly times I've reached out to you and your team for supporting, uh, being able to help those residents, um, without any prejudice and straight out support and and I told you this, um, and emails before, um, you know, that, that you have sent us and, you know, council and city manager are copying it, right? Um, definitely not take for granted how this situation, so some of the situations that happen in the city could have been so badly handled all over the, all over the nation. And we have been fortunate that they're handling properly, um, through our team, um, in the city of Maranier. And that requires, um, a lot of training. Obviously, I don't have to go, you know, case by case, but some of them definitely, um, I should read them sentence. I have to hold my breath and, and, and I'm very happy to see there's like a, a positive outcome of them. I mean, you guys have been respectful of, of the people, um, regardless of, um, who they are. You know, so, um, thank you for that. Um, the other thing is like, um, yeah, if we could start, and not just for the report for you and Ron, but for all the quarterly reports, um, and that might be a Kamali, um, Kamali question, um, Kamali asked, Mr. Kamali, can you make sure that all the reports are put up on, on our website? They have it this thing at home. I believe that you saw it this in a home on point. So that was there for the community to see, especially like after their presence, so that we're able to view it as well. Uh, because people do come back and, and, um, and look at this, right, um, and what's going on. And then we're able to see trends and stuff like that. So thank you for also for looking for our program because definitely doing this by hand is very time consuming. When you could be out there doing community work and if a, a program is able to like decipher some of this information to narrow it down to the things that we need, um, it definitely will be more helpful. But, um, thank you for going after the grants as well. Uh, something that I like to remind people, it's like our speed camera, um, not only allows us to be able to, um, subsidize some of the things, uh, that police officers in our police department has needed. But also we have been able to utilize that funding, uh, when it comes to our streets and sidewalks. Um, and that has to advance, uh, the ability for us to like get more, um, safe, um, sidewalks as well. So, um, that has helped a lot. And the message is always the same, please do not speed through the city of Maranier, not residential, not business. And definitely not to Route One. Um, and that's a clear message being sent. So, um, overall, thank you and thank you, thanks to your team as well for, for everything they do. All right?
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
All right, perfect. So I will be opening up to the community. Um, do we have anybody from this chat that would like to speak? Please put your name and last name on the chat. And is any, any comments or questions on Facebook? All right, perfect. And I see nothing here as well. So Chief, thank you so much for everything. Um, and Ron as well, um, I, Rosio, um, as well. Okay. I'll keep you the homework right now. I know, motherly duties. All right, moving on to the next one for item number seven, the update discussion spring park. This one is gonna be, uh, postponed for the next meeting, uh, for the next work session. Unfortunately, our director had an emergency and she's not here to present and this is what she's been working on. So, um, Mayor and Council have, um, will be postponing number seven and they're gonna like, uh, move it up to our next meeting. Or I will announce it just like this one as well. Okay? So now the new number, the number eight can become the new number seven. Discussion on residential parking, the mayor council will have discussion on, um, three foot buff of homeowners drivers on either side of the curb. So who's, who's gonna present on this?
Well, I'm gonna talk about this, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah. Do you hear me?
Yeah, the first yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, uh, I just want to bring your attention, yours and the council to this issue, this residential parking issue. So it's not really a, it's not a citywide issue that we're dealing with. I've been here seven years as the Director of Public Works and the City Manager. So we just have had, I could say not more than two or three cases that, you know, we have a parking issue like this. But also I want to make sure that, uh, because, uh, the resident was asking to do some painting on the three feet buffer on each side of the curb cut. This will eventually is gonna have a reduction in the public, you know, parking availability all over the city. It's gonna create more issue for the city and especially on the streets that. It's gonna create more issue for the city and especially on the streets that. We have only thirty five feet width, like on the south side. Like the Perry Street that we're talking about, this is the concern that I think we're looking at this issue right now. And, um, the last thing that I would say regarding this, it's, you know, painting the three feet. Buffer is it's gonna be very expensive project and I'm not recommending. Even the code, you know, section one, three dash one oh one. Is not recommending and also I've checked other cities and town like. In DC, this is not a practice in surrounding cities and town is not a practice also. I would recommend for this issue at this point. To increase the parking enforcement and ask our resident to reach out to our police department. By calling three zero one nine eight five six five six five. And getting assistance from them because this is just the case by case. This is what I have learned for the past seven years, so. If you have any question, counsel or anybody has any question, I'll be glad to respond and also Chief can also weigh in too.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Mayor, I I think it would also be advisable that we. Look at historically. Why why our current code allows. Uh, our residents to park in front of their and block their own driveways, which is in contrast. To the state, uh, law, which is actually in contrast to the county law as well. Um. County law does say that in that buffer area. A the consent of an owner or occupant of the premises, um, they're allowed to park in that buffer area. But we, the way our code reads is that. In front of a private driveway, including the three foot buffer. To either side of the curb cut. Except, well, no parking except with the consent of the owner or occupant of the premises. So we we may want to revisit that or get a list to weigh in or city attorney to weigh in. And there may have been some reasoning years ago why we are allowing that. Because truly if a county, uh, revenue enforcement car comes through. And sees someone blocking even their own driveway, um, they will cite them.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for the recommendation. I'm gonna go with Jared, Luke and Valerie. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Kamali. It's, um, you know, it's kind of helpful for me to be able to put in context, uh. You know, how how much of this is an issue and where of is it 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 where it is an issue within the city? Um, you know, is it, is it, was it, is it confined a couple areas that, you know, like in our commercial downtowns or. Places with certain, um, you know, certain particular pressures or is it happening all across the city? So the. Um, you know, the the feedback you're providing here is helpful for me to understand the context of, um, the issue. I. You know, I do, I do think that, um. You know, if if parking, i- i- if increased parking enforcement is an issue, I think that's. You know, certainly something I'd ask the chief and his his staff to focus on, um, you know, if we know this issue is concentrated in certain areas that we. We, uh, we focus on, um, proactive, um. You know, proactive citations and and ticketing. When folks are, um, you know, are are blocking driveways because that that is that is an issue, um. I would also, Chief, actually appreciated your bringing up this policy issue. Um, because at least, and and I love your feedback on this, I. I I was always a little confused by the fact our code appears, actually allows people to park in front. Of their driveways to the consent of the owner, what would I imagine, and correct me if I'm wrong here, what I imagine that creates for you? As a challenging situation in which you are not clear. Whether the car blocking in full or the car that's blocking a driveway partially or in full. Is actually doing so with permission of the owner, like, do you have any way of tracking that? And my guess is probably no.
Uh, good, good question, Jared. Uh, actually, I brought this up to the city manager as well. Uh, we had an incident, I think Valerie brought it to our attention.
Uh huh.
Um, a resident who had been cited for parking in front of her her own driveway, um. And when we ran that tag at three twenty six AM in the morning. That all that that tag came back to the address in Potomac, Maryland. Now, that happened to be the same. Uh, that residence vehicle, it was the name of the resident, but we didn't match it. We don't match it up with S stat to see who lives in that house or who, uh, who may have a tax ID at that house. But when we run those tags, uh, and we see that it's someone. In Potomac, Maryland, so we think, of course, it doesn't belong there. So now we, since that incident, I put out to my team. I want them to cite because our city ordinance allows it to cite by complaints only. So that's what we're doing. And also now that we're having this discussion, we'll target those areas that have been in question. Those areas of Perry Street, those areas of Twenty Eighth Street moving forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're done, Jared? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I am. I am sorry. Sorry about that. Yep.
Alright, Luke, followed by Valerie.
So my question is, and probably if I miss this earlier, but do we? If we're if we're not gonna. Sort of paint anything, I I'm confused by, was there something in the code that said the city should? Be ha- painting this three foot buffer? Is that something that we're we should do in the code and so we have to change the code in order if we're gonna not do that?
Well, let me respond to that, uh. Look, on the section one, three, one dash one oh one, the code is recommending only. Three feet buffer on each side of the curb cut. There is no recommendation for. You know, painting the curb.
Okay.
Yeah, it is very clear and it's in the city's code and, um. Okay, you know, we have no choice.
So we have no choice to enforce it, but so it's just so I'm understanding correctly. The the recommendation on enforcement is to not do the painting, but just to have residents call the police because the problem seems to be. Um, okay, um.
And as Chief mentioned it, our code states that. Uh, no, no cars or no parking should be allowed in front of the even the private driveway. But we have had, as you know, Chief mentioned, cases like, you know, people are parking over there and we just have to run the tag. And make sure, you know, so it's gonna be very challenging for us if we put the yellow curb over there and the neighbor is parking there. What we're gonna do? We're gonna, you know, write the ticket for the neighbor. And, um. The code is not recommending, overall, the code is not recommending any painting. It's just recommending three feet buffer on each side. And I believe this is in our city, since I've been here, as as Chief mentioned, it's only on Twenty Eighth Street. And Perry, Perry, because we have, you know, Penn Royal Station. That that restaurant and the wine bar, the new development. I do understand that it's causing some trouble, but somehow I do appreciate the resident to reach out to our police department. And Chief has this one on his radar to make sure that we increase the enforcement. At least we can mitigate some of these issues.
Yep, yep, thanks, helpful.
Okay, Valerie, the first yours?
Um, thank you, um, so. Obviously, parking around the traffic circle and down by the business areas is is a challenge, um. And it will continue to be a challenge and residents will continue to be upset and frustrated by the fact that their streets are completely parked up. And they don't have a parking permit system and their, you know, buffers come are being blocked. I know there is a challenging situation with police enforcing it. Because of the fact that you have this ability to park across your driveway. Um, but I do think we should look a little more, um, into a parking plan for this area, um. Because we don't have a current per parking plan and I think. Around Perry Street, especially on the northern side, but also on the southern side, we've had complaints from various residents there as well. So I think we need to think of a parking plan for the downtown core. Um, there, this is not just an issue in the downtown core, though, there's issues in Thirty First Street and Thirty First Street up by the apartments. Um, there's the neighbors asking for petitions, um, and then on Twenty Eighth Street, there's issues there by the apartments too. So I think, you know, in those certain areas, we should come up with a plan for, um, reducing the, um. Amount of complaints we get about parking if we can, so.
Okay.
I do think we should come up with a plan. I don't, I don't think that needs to be like a consultant that we pay fifty thousand dollars to do it. I think it's a study. That, you know, current staff could probably undertake, um, if, you know, if we want, so.
Thank you, Valerie, um. Yeah, so when we originally heard about this, that was one of the concerns I had when it comes to the code. The code is contradicting itself because if PD like they were mentioning, like they put a citation, right? Um, even if they match the license place, that could be your guess, who's parked in front of your driveway or you're allowing to block up the three. Foot, so now they have a citation. The citation that the chief was referencing was then, I believe, was it two, three years ago, Chief? And you were able to solve it, but the, that is, so we either have to one. Review our codes to make sure we're in line with the with the state and with the county. To make sure that does not longer take place, but the residents have to be aware that they'll be losing the ability to park on their driveway. Right, uh, blocking after driveway. Because the reality is like you go have a Virginia license place and you're parking in front of my driveway because they gave you permission. You know, and unless the resident calls, um. There's nothing much you could do. The other thing is like realistically, we only have one parking enforcement person. If PD is like in an emergency call. They might not prioritize putting a citation for a three foot buffer. Instead of dealing the emergency, especially at night, especially at three o'clock in the morning when. Our, you know, our squad might be smaller than during the day for administrative purposes. So it's definitely a bigger issue and I do agree with Valerie's more than just like, you know, uh, the downtown area. There's other streets that they've complained, especially like, you know. One resident was on Thirty Fifth Street. Right, so it'd be good for us to look into it and figure out what what could be done. Because even if our parking enforcement PD are walking by and people are blocking their own driveway, according to our law. You know, unless they're like, you know, the officers are gonna, are not gonna be knocking on everybody's door and saying, hey, is this your car? Is this your car? Do you give this person permission? Right, because the reality is like that's unrealistic neither. So I think we definitely either have to decide to review our code so that we line up with the county and the state. If that's the route we need to take. And then also at the same time, um, address the situation in some of the streets that Valerie, uh, mentioned. But one without the other is gonna make it very hard because at this point. It it goes back to the same thing. They will have to call and complain that there's a car blocking or they cannot go out. In order for PD to do something about it, because if not, they cannot. They cannot guess whether the car belongs to the person, whether they have permission to be there or not. So it's a more complex issue than 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 just, um, dealing with what street. So. I will say, um, let's put this on the agenda for what, next two months or so? So we could review any other feedback we have and figure out if anything else has moved from here. So we could have a follow up on it, okay? So we're in October, November, let's try either December or January. Does that work for everybody? Three months, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, because I definitely don't want the residents to feel like we're ignoring, but definitely something needs to, um, take place. Alright.
But I wanna say something, Mayor, before we go, uh, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna. I'm gonna work with Chief and the city attorney to look at our code. And then we will definitely look at those special areas, you know, three or one or two, whatever. Areas that, you know, are in question and definitely in in December. We will, you know, come up with some. Some solution, hopefully.
So Valerie, can you do me a favor? Can you like email the streets that you were mentioning so that way, um, they're upfront? And Chief, if there's anything from your reports that you know, like that that have been like hot areas when it comes to people complaining about people parking in front of their driveways. Or or in the location, um, I definitely appreciate it so that we we could center where where the problem is.
Yes, ma'am.
But a hundred percent looking into our code and figure out if that's the route, but I think that we should come back for another work session and have some recommendations. And, you know, focus on what that information looks like to figure out what the next steps are gonna be for us. Any, Miss Kamali, do you have any questions regarding that or no?
No, thank you so much. Thank you.
And thank you, Valerie, for for helping on on that front as well, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would just say, just really quickly, um, each location might have a different solution.
Yeah, it's the case.
Keep it flexible, yeah.
Thank you so much. That's a perfect point and perfect transition. Okay. So moving on to the next item and thank you, Chief, and your team for also like undertaking the the task. I know it's been a challenge, um. Being in conflict between, uh, the city, the county, the state, but it's also good for the residents to know that. If a prejudiced county comes by, right, they will be cited because against, um, it's it's against the county law. So please avoid parking in your driveway. See, the thing is like, if you, you know, if emergency vehicles do need to park or make U-turns or get access to, um. To to your location, parking a car in front of your driveway could limit the access they have to your house. So keep that in in mind, uh, as well. Alright, okay, moving on to the next one, um. ARPA discussion update number twenty two. So Luke, do you have the, well, Jimmy's not here, but Luke, do you have the the sheet to like, uh, do a run through?
Yep, if you can just enable the sharing, then I can do it.
So one thing I am gonna ask is for the next agenda packages where ARPA is discussed, we need to have this this sheet attached to it. So that way the community could follow up with us, um, and review it prior to the meeting. And not just at the meeting because, um, it it becomes a little bit hard to try to like pin it all together. So let's make sure this is added to the next agenda package as well, okay? Alright, Luke, um.
Okay, and then I know Mark is here for the Spring Park discussion. Uh, Mark, I don't know if you heard Mayor earlier, um, but, um. On the Spring Park discussion, um, Rosio, um, was that discussion slated for? Uh, sorry, let me stop sharing for a second. That was slated for next month, right? We had to, we had to push it off, Mark, because, um. Rosia had an emergency in the middle of this meeting and had to run. So just so you're aware, okay, let me get back to sharing my screen. There we go. Okay, can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, Mayor, would you like me to proceed and then pause where I think there might be, need to be some adjustments made to the allocation? Or how would you like to proceed?
Um, I would say read it to see and if there's any update, we'll fill it in.
Okay.
Right, and I know there is an update on the bike call for sure. Uh, that's the one that I do, I am aware that there is. I'm not sure about the other ones, so just read one and and we'll ask if there's any update and then we'll fill it in.
Okay, okay, um, all of the green, all the stuff you see in green here are things that we've already voted on approving and are in. Um, in the works, um, or maybe they've already been, um, distributed the funds. So the first big bucket here is some stormwater items. Um, Thirty Third and Perry, that project was incorporated into the thirty three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Street. Um, cost estimate, which you'll see, um, later in the document. Um, Thirty First and Perry, um, the cost for this project is actually six hundred and nine thousand dollars, but. Um, we received, um, five hundred and thirty thousand from the state, um, um. And which is great, which means the cost to ARPA will only be seventy nine thousand for this bucket. Um, that also includes Thirty First Street or. I don't know, it doesn't include the alley, never mind, never mind. Um, there's a couple of prop projects here that we have not voted to fund, um. Well, one was, uh, Rundle Road, um, which was two point three nine million. Um, Thirty Second Street, which was about half a million dollars. Um, the Thirty First Street Green Street Project between Rundle and Wyndham Road, um, which was three hundred thousand. Um, and then a redesign of the South Side, Thirty Fifth, Thirty Sixth and Thirty Sixth, Thirty Seventh Street, which is one point one two million. We did approve Newton Street, um, between Thirty Fourth and Thirty Seventh Street at nine hundred and twenty two option. At twenty two thousand, sorry, that wasn't an option with a permeable gutter for the whole street. Um, we did approve, um, a climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planting for the Tree Commission for twenty twenty thousand. Um. We did, um, not approve, um, stormwater for, um, Mount Rainier Elementary, Joe's Movement and the Melinda Miles, um, Green Roof. Um, we did approve, moving on to some education funding. Um, we did a- a- approve expanding outdoor classrooms both at Thomas Stone for twenty thousand. And at Mount Rainier Elementary for twenty thousand. Um, we did approve, um, access to public resources for Hispanic or Latino populations. Um, for fifty thousand dollars, that grant was made available, um. Um, and I think that the, um, Joe's Movement. Um, um, and I think that the, um, Joe's Movement Apparium one, um, was awarded the funding from the, from that grant opportunity funding. Um.
All right.
We talked about early childhood vouchers and five-two-nine college savings account, but we took no action there. Um, the next budget is business aid. Um, we had, um. Small Business Assistant Grant Program up to five thousand dollars to replace lost revenue for city businesses. We ended up allocating seventy thousand total, um, to businesses here. Um, we awarded, um, I think the total was twelve businesses. Um, uh, uh, and who got that funding? Um, next up is, uh, food security. We budgeted three hundred thousand dollars, two rounds of funding here, one hundred thousand and two hundred thousand then for three hundred thousand dollar total. Um, that has all been spent, I think. Um, rental relief, we funded fifty thousand dollars for, um, and that program is ongoing. Some of that money has been distributed and I believe some of it. Is still, um, yet to be distributed. I don't know if we wanna pause here for any questions on this front, cause I know this is in flight.
So I think you have a couple more, just, just round them off and then we'll just like go on. Um, cause originally I thought you were gonna read them and ask if there was an update, so that way you could fill in the gaps as you want, but, um, that way also works. So I think maybe like two more things left in, in the box.
Okay.
Thing.
Um, there were some projects here in white that we didn't pick up. Um, Richardson Park, we had, uh, um, allocated with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if we got money approved from the governor's budget, we were gonna lower this item to forty-four thousand. Um, so mayor, we can go back to that one if there's a, there's a way to lower that one. Um, we have not allocated anything to Spring Park, Rogers Park or Edgemont Park. Um, for the social worker, we, um. Did a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, forty thousand annually for the three years of ARPA. Perhaps there's room to change that number considering that we're. Well into this year and that position's been unfilled for a while. Um, we did allocate ten thousand for vaccine updates. Um, we did give two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of bonuses to frontline workers, um, of the city. Um, for our staff who worked really hard, um, during some of the scariest moments of, of COVID and we're out there with everyone. Um, the program manager position was three hundred thousand dollars, which we have not filled. Um, and so that may be one we can come back to and change. Um, the ARPA consultant was one hundred thousand dollars total. We've already spent that money. The thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue and thirty-three hundred block of Perry Street, which includes those stormwater fixes we referenced earlier. And, um, and the memorial park redesign, that project was, um, voted for for one million dollars. That project is. Um, in flight right now through permitting, I believe. The Pots Hall Welcome Center, um, we allocated one million for that and that bid is out. Um, I, well, I see, I'm sorry, we have the, the bids in-house. Um. We've gotten responses to the bids, I should say. Um, thirty-four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue, we allocated forty-five thousand dollars for. Melinda Miles building a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make that building habitable and remove asbestos. Um, scholarships for students, we, we up the scholarships for existing programs, um, to, to twenty-one thousand dollars extra. Um, uh, annually, and then the bike co-op window replacement, um, we have here, um, has eight thousand dollars and I think we need to. Change that line item and have a vote there. Um, Operation Arts Project, we allocated for five thousand. So as things stand, um, we've allocated four point seven million with six hundred and ninety-four thousand remaining. Um, but that, you know, the remaining funds could go up as we lower some of these projects down.
Look, before you go up, let's just go from the bottom up on the green one. So that would, you know, not going back and forth. So I could give you an update where operations are. I know they made with the arts commission. And I'll be submitting, uh, their contract for legal team to see it, cause they wanna get, uh, working on it as soon as possible. Okay? So they met with our commission, they got feedback. So right now I'll submit the contract. So, um, Kamali will send it out to legal. They'll submit it and in the meantime, as long as we get the contract, they'll get to work as we are working on, on the location. So that's where, um, operations are project, um, is at right now. Go up to the next one.
What do we?
Bike call up. Um, Kamali was a sixteen thousand that, um.
Yes, ma'am.
A window repair, but it's also for.
Also the shelter on the backside.
For the shelter on the backside, if you could update that to include that Luke and.
Sixteen thousand.
There you go. Window replacement and back. What is Mr. Kamali said again?
It's a shelter replacement on the backside of the bike co-op.
Okay. So that one, um, can you highlight it in, uh, yellow? Cause this one I'm, I'm gonna be asking for. You know, if we could move forward, if we could agree to move forward to a legislative session to, uh, to vote and approve. So that way, I mean, highlight into whatever color you need. So we, we, unless you guys wanna decide right now. We could move on and like move it to, um, make it yellow to move it to legislative session. So I do need to hear from you guys to figure out how you guys feel about it so that we could turn it into. Not green, cause it's not approved, but we could turn it into a different color. What color is?
I think we can have it, if we have consensus, we can turn it to blue and then that will save it for a vote at the next session.
Perfect. Thank you. So council, I need to hear from you guys about the bike co-op. So I'm gonna start with Jared.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm supportive of this.
Perfect Valerie.
Definitely support, um, fixing up our bike co-op, so.
Luke.
Yep, definitely support it.
And I'm supportive. So it sounds like, you know, it's turning blue.
Yeah.
So, um, Melissa, can you make sure for legislative session? Under ARPA funding for approval, uh, the bike co-op window replacement and rear shelter replacement for sixteen K is on the agenda. Okay? Melissa?
We got it, ma'am. We'll take care of.
All right. Thank you. All right. What's the next one in green, Luke?
Um, the scholarships for students.
So, uh, that, uh, we have appointed the scholarship committee. We are having orientation coming out next week, if I'm not mistaken, Melissa, and, um. We are gonna be, um, we're gonna start putting the information out after the orientation happens. So that is like, um, that's moving, moving forward.
Okay.
And last year we had, um, oh, seven scholarships awarded. So we might have to change the amount of what we have in balance for that right now.
We awarded.
Thousand dollars each.
Seven scholarships, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
All right. Perfect. Uh, go ahead to the next one. The Myers Building, uh, that money was thirty, um. That was thirty, that is already completed, Mr. Kamali?
It's completed, but mayor, I need to provide mayor and council an update on that. Not tonight, but, uh, because we have gone over one hundred fifty K. Due to the renovation that we did, adding the ramps and other issue that we've. Faced, you know, during the renovation, it's normal. When you go to the old building, you know.
Yeah.
Renovation, the cost is not gonna be exactly as we had the estimate for it. So I will give you, uh, the new update because we are closing out that project with the contractor and we wanna make sure that. We have covered everything. So I will have a full information by next week.
So I will say for the future, Mr. Kamali, something like that happened, you need to let us know as soon as possible. The minute you're getting close to the amount that is supposed to be spent, let us know. So that we're aware, so that way, um, we're able to like move the number, especially with the ARPA, since we're like trying to figure out how much money is left. Um, that will give us the lease on it. So, uh, Luke, can you? Can you put something on ball that says, uh, the number will change and that way like, um, we do not try to go over the amounts, uh, that we have allocated. So if you could put it on, on ball, Luke, so that we know we have to come back to it.
Yep.
Thank you, Luke. All right. So thirty-four on narrow island avenue, forty-five K was all that funding spent, uh, spent already?
It was, but mayor, as I emailed mayor and council last week, unfortunately. We spent forty-five K and we thought that we could, uh, rent it as a commercial. But it looks like it, you know, there is a state mandate and since the building is not. ADA compliance, we have to go to residential option. And Mr. Hopkins found the resident, uh, a new tenant. That is interested to rent the place. As I provided you the proposal. We need to put another fifteen thousand plus the appliances. To, to make a new check. To make a new kitchen over there with the appliances. So that number needs to go up if mayor and council would like to move forward with this option.
So I would say we need to, we'll skip this one right now because, uh, council agreed that they need, we need to have a. Meeting just on this to figure out if this is what the, what we want.
Okay.
So at this point, council has not decided whether residential option it is. And what legally means for us to be able to be landowners, because one thing is for us to like. You know, put information now that we have a business and the other thing is like for a direct, um, thing. So.
So we're gonna keep it vacant?
It has, we have to have a meeting, Mr. Kamali, cause that's something that council needs to decide. That could be up for the November meeting. But that's something the council needs to decide. This is what they wanna do. And what it means to be landlords of a residential area.
Okay. Sounds good.
Go on to the next one, Luke. Um, Luke, in your notes, you put residential, yeah, uh, put a question mark on it because, um. I, I don't even know if it's, is, if it's zoned for that at this point. That's the, that's the other question that we need to, we need to ask the, the county.
Oh, I, I think it is. I think it used to be rented out, but.
Yeah, it used to be rented out.
To a resident, yeah.
Presidential and business are two different things, but the conversation.
The, that, that's the miss, it's mixed, mixed use designation there.
So I would like to see that paper from the county that says that before we get ourselves in trouble. All right. Perfect. Move on to the next one. Pots Hall Welcome Center, uh, what's the update on that one?
Uh, as I emailed mayor and council, we received the proposal and the lowest one was five point nine. Right down, working with the architect and see if we could have some. Alternatives and shared with mayor and council to scale down the project if we could. Otherwise, we need to move forward with five point nine.
And how many, uh, bids were received, Mr. Kamali? So Luke, were they correctly?
Well, we received four. Four bits. And, uh, the lowest one was five point nine ten, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. We could say five point nine. From.
So what touch of those documents to this document? All right. Perfect. Next one up, Luke.
Uh, mayor, um, uh, what's the path forward there as far as when we're gonna talk about when? I don't know if this question is for the city manager, when? Well, because I'm, 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 I'll speak for myself. I'm fine with a, with a higher bid if it means the project we get done gets done. You know, we've, we've. Got a lot of money from the state. We can get more and we can finance stuff. So I'm just wondering, and there's, there's money in the reserves as well. So I'm just wondering. Um, what's, what, what's the path forward there? Are we gonna get presented with, with like their recommendation from the architects on what to do here, Mr. Kamali? Is that the idea?
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, I was gonna do it on Monday, but I've been out. And when I go back on Thursday. I can provide you guys by Monday or Tuesday next week, because I need to, to review it with them and. Find out what items are we taking off that project and if the mayor then present it to mayor and council. If you guys wanna stay with the original. We stay with the original drawings. If you guys wanna bring it down, because I'm looking at the budget that we have right now. And, uh, it's up to the mayor and council how they want me to move forward with it.
So add it for the November, um, for the November meeting.
Can I ask a quick question on this?
Go ahead, Jared.
Uh, you know, typically when you have a bids go out for something like this, there's a, uh. Certain amount of time they're good for. What's the, what's the time period that bids are?
I gotta look at it, but, uh, uh, I believe they are good for sixty days, if I'm not mistaken. Because of, you know, the inflation and the prices keep changing. So I just have to look into it and get back to you guys.
Okay. And so I just want you, make sure we keep that in mind as we. Get this to a session and you, you present to us and we get to a place to make a decision. Cause I.
Sure.
I, I wanna make, yeah, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, anything else on this?
So.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say it should be at the November legislative session, right? So we don't wait. For the work session.
Okay. Wait it for the November work session. I mean legislative session. If they're ready, if not, it's gonna have to be the number of work session. So Kamali, you, you tried to push it for the legislative session to present to us. With everything, architects and everything else, what it looks like, because, uh, we need to make sure we know. One, not just what the bids are, who they are. But also at the same time, what is the, what are they bringing that is different between the lower cost and the higher cost and what it looks for timing? So there's a lot, a couple of questions we need to resolve before, um.
Well, what I'm trying to understand that. Because we have a, a contractor that is asking for eight point seven. Do, do we want them? Do you want me to explain it? Or? I'm kind of lost in this process because when you look at those proposals, one of them is, two of them is. Six and eight and the other two is five point nine. And the lowest one is five point nine ten. So, and we look at their references, their qualification, they're the one that to be selected. So, but I'm trying to understand what should I bring to the council on? The next.
I said bring the bits because it is an open process to make sure the residents know who are the people that bid, what are the amounts. And what was the process of recommendations moving forward to? And if we have questions, we'll be able to address them there.
All right. I can, I can provide the same, same table that I provided to mayor and council in my bi-weekly report.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And, okay. And if there's anything else, council members that you need, uh, please provide it, uh, to see all of us and provide it to the city manager. Okay? All right. Move up one more.
Clarify, um, Mr. Kamali, what the mayor said, you know, your recommendation on what to do moving forward. Um, just you, you're clear. We, we want your recommendation and what that looks like.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that.
All right, go up.
This one, I think, Mr. Kamali, do we have any update for this one, this project?
This project, as I mentioned in my bi-weekly report, right now we are having everything in deep eye. And I will hear from the consultant by next week and then I will keep everybody posted in my bi-weekly report.
But at this point, there's no permits for it, right?
No, no. Right now, mayor, we have got everything clear with park and planning, SHA. And now we almost filed with the deep eye for the final permit. So, and I mentioned this one in the bi-weekly report and I'm waiting for the consultant. To update me by next week and see how we can move forward. And then we may have to ask you and the rest of the council, if you guys can make a call and expedite the process. Because deep eye usually takes so much time. And if you remember, we had the same issue for Pots Hall and the bike co-op.
Yeah, the issues like getting the number and then we could move forward to expedite, but if we don't have the number, it's, it's hard because I've already had conversations with people regarding.
No, we will have case number. We will have a case number. Definitely.
The other thing to address is like, you know, the funding for, um. For this project, um, expires next year and is supposed to be our final extension. So that's something that.
We know that, ma'am. We know that and we, we will finish this project by June, which is the. Extension for both of the grants and I have my eyes on it. And I do appreciate that, you know, we will definitely have it and I will face the deadline and I wanna say it on the record.
Mr. Kamali, when I make a comment, it's not just for you, it's for the community to be aware that this is the challenges that we're facing.
Thank you.
Be aware of that. So it might be something you hear more than once and it's fine, but it's also the community who needs to hear that this is the reason why we're trying to make sure. We're moving forward to expedite the, the things, cause there is, um, a time limited on, on, on funding. All right. Perfect. Move on to the next one. ARPA consultant, we have that one. It does ongoing. Uh, you could put ongoing on that one. I look for ARPA consultant. Because right now it looks like we are proving anything else. So ongoing.
Can I say something regarding this, mayor?
Hold on, okay. Hold on one second. And, um, you could even put the name of the consultant there, Luke, so that was, um. All right, uh, Mr. Kamali, what are you saying?
I was gonna. I was gonna let Mayor and Council regarding this, the the consultant agreement was expired at the end of the October, it has to be renewed. So I gave it to the city attorney to look at it. Once I get it from the city attorney, because in the contract, it says we can extend it for another year. So I will share the information after the review by the city attorney with Mayor and Council.
So, uh, Kamali, moving forward, can you make sure that um every um, let me see, August? You review the contract so that way like we it doesn't overlap so that we have enough time to have legal review it. And if we need to extend it, we uh, we make um the consultant aware because I do not wanna put herself in a position where it it overlaps uh as we're doing all these projects and um and that way it puts itself in limbo. Or if you choose to do another consultant, it gives us enough time to be able to make that um, that down. So if you could put in the calendar at least August, if not July, for you to review it every year so that we don't come down to, um, because we're already in October. So it already, it already collapsed. Okay?
Do do we need to allocate more funds to this? It was unclear. I know, I know that we need to renew the contract, but are there enough funds remaining, Mr. Kamali?
No, we just need to renew it and it was thirty thousand dollars for three years and already we have hundred K.
Sorry, can you, do you mean the?
No, we just need to renew the agreement.
Oh, you you, okay, you you have sufficient funds left.
Exactly.
In the, okay, that that was that was my question. Okay.
So it's not ten K per year, that that's we're trying to get at, it's ten K.
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand.
You you've only spent thirty, roughly thirty thousand so far out of the hundred K.
So that would be clarified right there because it.
Okay, thank you.
Ten K per year. Thank you for the question, Jared.
Yep, okay, thank you, Mr. Kamali. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, okay, so program manager, um, I know we we started the second year and we don't have one, but we said we're gonna leave some money there in case there is a need, um. So that's for a three-year period, potentially three years, but remember, um, if um, the way Arpa works is like we have X amount of time and then we could extend the projects if they're ongoing a little bit longer. So I wanna make sure we're fully aware of that. But I think we could take some money out of that. Council, what are your thoughts on it?
I think if we're not, if we're not using it, we should take it away and put it back into the pot of funds.
I, I just wanna make, I mean, my thought on this, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I I I don't disagree with what Valerie is saying. I just wanna make sure that um you know, if, you know, there there's the possibility of using, you know, we're we're doing a lot of capital projects um, in the next, you know, in the next several years, I I I wanna make sure that we have sufficient staffing to be able to manage and support all those. So you know, when I was thinking about this and that's why I brought it up the first time is like I I wanna make sure that, you know, we have money set aside if we have a staffing needs that's related to the project implementation, project delivery, because there is kind of like this big one-time bump. Um, in terms of, yeah, you know, in 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 terms of the sort of the staff attention needed to a lot of these one-time projects on top of what we have ongoing.
Thank you, Jared. Just as a pause, um, I did let you finish your thought, but the clerk has let us know the time has been up. Can you guys allocate ten more minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably moving second, um, any discussion, objections, abstentions? Here, none, Melissa, go ahead now, ten more minutes. And thank you, Melissa, for 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 flashing it in my screen. Okay, so um, uh, Luke, go ahead.
Um, yeah, um, if we wanna keep some amount up here, but you know, that's fine, um. But I think we should at least lower it by some amount, either a hundred or two hundred thousand.
I would say let's lower it by a hundred, so it's two hundred K. So that way, like, if if Mr. Kamali needs any support on this for program manager, we have some funding there or for somebody that leaves the capital improvement plans, because we do have a lot of them going on. So that way, everything doesn't falls out there and we do have an extra person to help us out with that. Okay? So put, put a hundred K on on the pot. And we could always review it at the end of next year. And if we decide to lower it, then that's the beautiful thing about reviewing it as much as we're doing it. We could always like keep dropping if we need something, somebody for something else that that's a good part to like potentially look into.
I I agree with that. Um, I also think um for, I mean, just in terms of, you know, staffing and thinking about the next year's budget. I do think we should push for community planner, community development manager, somebody who can do things like the street and sidewalk study and and um, you know, manage the rental program and other things like that, that takes it away from. So we have more people working on different things. Um, so I think that's just something to think about as well.
I agree. Thank you, Valerie. Okay, um, moving on to the next item, go, go up, Luke.
Bonuses were awarded, vaccines, social worker.
That's, we have to leave it right there because remember, we might be able to extend it for more than three years if need be and um, we need to, either Kamali or chief needs to look at what what it was the reason why we're not having one, is it funding, stability, what what does it looks like? Um, because we definitely need one and I know PD has been great at like doing some of the work, but between the, between the three, four of us, it is is quite a bit of work uh to do, um, even with the resources that we have. Okay? All right, go up. Keep going. I would say for Richardson Park, the only reason why I wanted to leave five, uh, one hundred and fifty K is because playgrounds based even on my research are ridiculously expensive. If we're gonna do Richardson Park, we need to do it right. It's the only playground we have, so I don't wanna be coming back and be like, we need five more dollars and a hundred and six. It's gonna be close, but remember, I, you know, there's other costs associated with it and um we're getting a lot of involvement from our, from our youth and um but definitely I make sure that that we are not too limited to what it looks like. So we're gonna be looking for grants as well to figure out some of that cost is like even um reduced with the grants, but I'll leave a hundred and fifty K to then until the project finishes. So that way, um we could get some funding from there. But um, Mr. Kamali, when is the uh projected time for Richardson Park? Um, anything to start?
Well, I have to get information from Rocio because she was in communication with D N R to provide some more information, documentation. But we know that we have been awarded one oh six, so I can, you know, provide more information later.
Yeah, we were awarded on the board of um, the board of public works did vote to approve it as well, so we should be fine. So it's not just, it wasn't just in the governor's budget, but it's been moved forward to an extent which is like approval of the board. So that information should be coming through. In the meantime, we'll continue collecting um data from from the youth. Um, and and work on that plan. All right, perfect. So up. Luke, can you move it up, please?
Yep.
Rental relief for a fifty K, how much money has been awarded, Mr. Kamali?
I believe, uh, based on the email, uh, I shared with you guys eighteen thousand so far. And I was requesting some direction on that in, on that fund, the fifty K, because we've been receiving eight twenty-two applications. And this has been out since August. So I do appreciate you guys, if you look at the recommendation from the Arpa consultant in this regard.
Okay, and also can you please, that this twenty-two applications, this is like a lot, way to figure out what communication plan we need to move forward.
Mayor, I cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
I say we need to make sure we know what communication plan we're moving forward to reach on to the other, um, to the other residents. Because the information is still not getting to them that this is even available.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, anything else, anyone?
No.
Okay, and I just have an email from uh Valerie, can you please um also follow up with her regarding the rest of the address? I know I submitted information. Also submitted that request as well. Okay, so. I can never get it right between up and down, just.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Whatever direction, whatever direction that is. Uh, for food insecurity, um, I am gonna be meeting with Melissa, I saw, I guess I emailed Melissa to be able to finalize what the food baskets look like for November and December. Um, so this money, this funding was also used last year. And we're, I'm also gonna be working on what else um we need when it comes to food security. Because things have changed a little bit more, um, when it comes to like, you know, how are we getting uh food provided to the residents? So um, more information is coming forward. I know the team put flyers out for safety night out, which is like one of the things about that event is like so big that we're able to get to a lot of residents when it comes to things the city is doing and and upcoming events. So that is work in progress. We'll let you guys know. And I know we're, I know for a fact we're working with both of the schools and Rainier Manor, and then we'll also put information out that can be enlarged to make sure on those buckets. So um, at this point, we we've been asked, it's like if they're they attend both of our schools, they're gonna be um directed to um, to our two um to our two grade wonderful uh school liaison, Ms. Washington and Ms. Valencia. So that way they could work us with this, but they're compiling, um, they're they're compiling the list right now. I also talked to Cesar Chavez, there are some Maranier students that do go to Cesar Chavez. So I'm gonna be having the conversation with her um as well to figure, you know, to make sure, one, if they're Maranier residents, they know that this, this is um a service we provide and figure out how we can work to be able to um help our students um that do go to Cesar Chavez. Okay, that's another elementary or outside border, but um, we have quite a few students from Maranier going there. All right, um, moving up. The small business assistance grant, all that money was given and we even added extra money.
Yep.
Okay, so is there? Is there anything else that you guys found on the list, uh, council, that you guys wanna make a comment update or anything you guys are thinking of? We have two minutes.
I would add just, um, we haven't seen an update from, um, I know we approved the um Newton Street um redesign from thirty-fourth to thirty-seventh street. And I'm just flagging that one, Mr. Kamali, I don't think I've seen any update on that on a biweekly report. I'm just flagging that that's one that we did approve, so um yeah, that that, that's one that I think needs some work on.
So, Mr. Kamali, to ask you a question is, oh, yeah, I see it. Thank you, uh, Luke for that. So L I D is the one that's gonna be working on on that one. Are they just waiting to go from Memorial Park to start working? This is not what it is or or what is um, was there a reason why we haven't had an update on this one? If you're speaking, Mr. Kamali, I cannot hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was mute. Well, I have started, you know, working with them with L I D and because they're the one that started this, all of this project long time ago. And I will have a good information very soon.
Yeah, please, because um, as you um usually remind us, winter, you guys don't touch anything.
And the temperatures are changing as we speak. You know, it's really, it was really cold today.
Well, I just wanna make sure that first we have to design the project, then we're gonna go to construction. So I think this is gonna be sometimes next year to be implemented.
You think in spring?
Uh, hopefully, hopefully. I don't know how long the design is gonna take, but I will, I will get that information and provide it to Mayor and Council.
Perfect. And to Luke's point, please add this to your um, to your biweekly report so that we know the updates so that we um.
Will do.
Because I mean, the years with Arpa are passing pretty fast. We're in our second, our starting, starting the second year, right? So before we know it, like time is gonna run out and we wanna make sure we utilize every single penny. And if anybody didn't use their money, I'm happy to take their money too. All right, perfect. Luke, is there anything else? Thank you for catching that as well.
Yep, I think that's it.
So can you do me a favor, Luke, under the the one that you mentioned, put um, will be um updates on the weekly report? Okay, uh, one more thing, Mr. Kamali, the climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planning. Is that underway or was the update on that one?
That one is something that the tree commission, I need to get in touch with Mary Lee and find out. Because we have informed them that, you know, they know that they have the twenty K. I think they were waiting for springtime. If I'm not mistaken, but I can get some information on that one too.
So can you put, uh, Luke, put follow-up and you could, if you could give us the follow-up before the next um, Arpa update, uh, should be fine. So that we could just for the legislative session, we could just like fill in the the updates that we need for like the few things that were not updated tonight.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, Valerie, um, Jared, anything else you guys are looking here that um, that you see that's needed? Or questions?
Um, not yet, no. I will probably have the next one.
Perfect. Thank you, Valerie. Jared?
I don't have anything now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Luke?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
All right, perfect. So um, if, uh, Luke, can you make sure you email this to Melissa so that we should also have it included in as part of the larger package?
Yep.
So thank you for that. Okay, so moving on to the next item. So just a time checkup, it is nine twenty-four. And our council rule says after two hours and a half, I have, you know, I I have to do a check-in. Yep, to share your screen back, Luke. Um, we have to do a check-in to figure out where we're at, if you guys wanna continue what you guys wanna do. So I think we're almost done. We got like, I think the big items out of the way. Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
It's a back, um, there you go, thank you. Yeah, we're down to the last few ones. If you guys could hold on a little bit, I've been trying to move this agenda as fast as I can and removing out spring park definitely helped. All right, presentation discussion, the proposed budget calendar for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. The city manager uh will present the proposed budget calendar for F I twenty twenty-four. And Melissa, can you put it on the screen, please? Thank you. So I'm gonna do a quick one, um, just as a bunch of like information. Um, every year, there is a resolution put together. Uh, Mr. Kamali, city managers cannot introduce, has to be introduced by Mayor and Council, stock cannot introduce. Um, has to put, um, has to propose a calendar for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. It gives opportunity for the mayor and council, but also the residents to know way ahead of time, months ahead of time, what the calendar will look like when we're gonna be discussing um the budget um for the city. So this very, this briefly reads, uh, whereas the customer must adopt a budget of city revenue expenditure for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three, ending June thirty twenty twenty-four, whereas the budget should provide a complete financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year, include estimates of anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures and whereas charter section seven oh two provides that a budget for the next fiscal year should submitted to the mayor and council no later than March thirty-first of each year and whereas the deadline for the council to adopt a city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four is June thirty twenty twenty-three. Because once July twenty-first hits, um, we have no budget. Whereas the budget process is lengthy one and whereas it's necessary to inform the public about, removing the scrollers like confusing me, Melissa. For public about the proposed budget, hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and allow the citizens to review comments before the final adoption of the budget ordinance. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Maranier, Maryland. One, the following calendar of events is adopted for the preparation, adoption for the city of Maranier fiscal year. So just as a point, can you move it up? Thank you. So as a point of information, this is just a present uh, the city manager is presenting us what the calendar will look like. This has not been finalized and the step basically is he presents it today. As you could see in the calendar, there is like two September eighteen work session for setting proposed budget calendar. It moves on to a legislative um session. Uh, so legislative session on December sixth, uh, where we adopt the budget calendar. Um, that way it gives enough time for the residents to be able to um put any input if they have any. For, and at this point, no budget will be presented. This is just a calendar on Friday, December ninth, it says budget instructions to all. for, and at this point, no budget will be presented. This is just a calendar on Friday, December ninth, says budget instructions to all city departments will be given as long as community groups as well. Friday at twenty-seven deadline for city departments, community groups, and by community groups, um, that also means committee. Um, if you could edit that, Mr. Kamali, to our community groups slash committees, uh, that's something that hasn't been edited in the past, so we need to edit it.
Will do that.
Okay, move it up, Melissa. So at this point, it's just telling you like the backside of, right there, the backside of what we do with the budget, right? Like the calendar and talking, you know, our city manager talking to the the department heads, the committees in order to like set one, and on Friday, March third, the city will submit the proposed budget to council to say to seven, the city manager will present proposed budget. Will hold a work session and proposal FY twenty twenty and discuss the tax rate. That's on the seven. On the sixteen of next year, I noticed publishing the print journal's post and sentinel public hearing, the proposed budget will go out. That will include the cost yield. All right, April first, the public hearing, this is a Saturday. Um, in a work, followed by a work council, work, uh, mayor and council work session on the budget. To say before discussion FY proposed budget and fiscal year and record of the um, and first reading of record of the FY twenty twenty-four budget ordinance. On the eighteen, public hearing, this is be like the second public hearing for proposal FY twenty twenty-four budget discussion city council and twenty-four first budget on the second, we will be, we, we will be voting. Which this one falls the day after the election, so be aware of that if you guys wanna like move it up to a different day. Uh, June uh, six, um, there's if needed vote on FY twenty twenty-four, and if for whatever reason we're not done, we could always like move this to, um, we could have an extra extension as long as the budget is passed before uh, June thirtieth, because July thirty-first, um, we have a new budget in session. So if we have not approved it, um, there's no money to pay, no staff, no nothing. All right, so um, move it up, Melissa, move it down? Move it to the next space. There you go. Number two, the budget calendar for preparation for adoption of the city of Mariner. FY two budget may be amended or adjusted by mayor and council as necessary and has to look for signatures. So, um, to point out to some of, some people that have not gone to budget process with us, the reason why we announced this calendar so that way you guys know ahead of time what days and times and location, and if it's not a Saturday, if it's not a regular Tuesday, you guys are aware what's happening behind the behind doors as the budget is getting put together. But also where if you need to like uh, make a comment. And also, um, part of this process is getting our committees um, involved. They usually uh, propose um, budget um, additions um, of rarely subtractions uh, to um, to the city manager when it comes, so that way he could help build the budget with the finance department and present it to mayor and council. All right, um, Luke, am I missing anything regarding the budget um, steps?
I don't think so. I think you hit it all. I think we always, uh, I don't think a year has gone by where we don't relook at this calendar and realize a date doesn't work. Um, so, you know, just try to take a look now and see if there's anything, and then it usually comes from the mayor and council, so just try to take a look now and see if there's anything weddings or some stuff we can't plan for that just comes up, but um, you know, some stuff you can.
A hundred percent. Jared, anything else you need, you wanna add that I might have missed?
Oh, no.
Second budget? Technically, the first one.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Luke.
Can I just ask Melissa to scroll down again to the dates?
Yeah, I would, yeah. So let me, while you, you know, there specifically, that's not gonna work, Luke, or is it just an overall right now?
I was just, I was gonna look at the spring, spring dates, because usually spring breaks, breaks for our kids is one that always trips us up.
Yeah, that's very true, because I mean.
Know what spring break is like now, but Valerie and you, mayor, and me may wanna just figure out when spring break is for our kids and, because some of us leave.
I do have kid, so anyways, Valerie, Valerie might, might know by by um, by, go ahead.
The spring break is April third to sixth.
Oh. So Tuesday, April four is definitely not gonna work. So put a, put a, put a, put a highlight on it, and we need to figure out what you guys want to do, because if it's the third, the fourth, obviously, we're in spring break. The second, be aware that it's election year, so does the first Monday last on May first, Melissa, for election day?
Yes, mayor.
So I know in the past, what we have done is like whenever it's election year, we tried, if possible, we tried to pass the budget ahead of time, so that was one less thing, um. Then you customer has to face within five seconds of like joining um, joining the council. I know, I know, um, the council members did that for Luke and I when we first got elected. Right? I think they eventually in the passing before we did. Um, so anyway, so that's something else to keep in mind. The other thing I am gonna ask, and we've done it in in two, two, three years ago. Any budget like readings, they have to be pulled out of, out of the regular work session or legislative session. Because that turns our meeting until a twelve, one o'clock meeting. So um, for the first reading for April four, Melissa, is that um, yeah, see, you're gonna have to change it as spring break anyways. That's a regular, uh, is that a work? That's a regular legislative session?
Yes, it is.
So we might have to pull that one anyways to the following Tuesday. Okay?
Okay.
So double check, because I know you guys have to be very. Thank you, Valerie. Um, let's see, third to the ten. Yeah, so we might have to pull it to the weekend after, um, to make sure that um, on it. So look, whatever the next Tuesday is, um, Melissa. So that might be the suggestion, figure out what it looks like for the public hearing and the timing. Okay? Even if that means we need to either move it up or move it down, but um, as long as, and double check with um, the powers to be. I know you guys did an excellent job last year making sure that it got to the um, to the newspapers on time and we didn't have no problem. Thank you for um, fixing what happened uh, the previous year. Um, the, and then doing an extending job with this budget, making sure that um, you guys cross your i and your t's when it came to like publishing this information out. All right, so Luke, do you sign anything else aside, aside from spring break?
I would just say, um, there, I I know we're looking at doing it a week later, but we could do like, if we pushed everything up to like the last Saturday in March to have the public hearing and the council work session and like had a legislative session that.
Yeah, it could be a week up or a week down.
Yeah, you could, if you, well, and I was gonna say, if you move it a week up, then you get to mayor, a good point you raised, which is trying to move the vote before the election.
Uh, with that, we will have to check, because between the published notice and the public hearing, it has to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You will have to figure that one out.
Yeah, but that will mean everything will be move up, Melissa. So that means like the Saturday one. The other thing is like, keep in mind that if we're, especially at the beginning when the numbers are bigger, so we might be editing. You have to have, um, was it like, um, fourteen days apart? So we need to make sure we fall very like carefully on it. That's what I was thinking, maybe doing the third, the second Tuesday. So uh, so give us, can you guys for the next, for legislative session, just give us um, an update and a couple of options based on what we, what we're asking for today? So that way we could like uh, start like finalizing it um, on it. So um, Jared, do you have anything to add?
I don't, mayor.
Okay. Valerie?
No, no.
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, so for the legislative session, they're gonna come up with a, with a, with um, with a calendar with a couple of options to see like if it was, if you guys could please send it to us as soon as possible, ideally for next week, so we could start looking to see what works before it. Um, the council rule does state that the packages have to come out like before the end of the business day on the Friday before the meeting, in order for us to be able to digest all this information, okay?
So no, actually, no, mayor, it says the Monday before my close of business, but we do try to get it by Friday.
Is this our council rules you're referring to, Melissa?
Yeah, or charter.
No, the council rules are the rules that the mayor and council agree to. So that is like, uh, usually that's what we're doing, uh, when former council members are, were at it. But even then, I will tell you this, having twenty-four hour notice for the community to be able to review a sixty-nine page package is just not doable. So um, if it's not there, I will be moving forward to like making that change. So the council rules, um, the council rules change or the the changes is within us, but twenty-four hours before a meeting is just not doable. Um, and that's the reason why we started submitting um, items before Wednesday, the Wednesday before, so that would the agenda will go out by Friday. But if it's in the council rules that, um, does the agreement that we made with ourselves, and that's the reason why we're moving forward to that. So if we could send, if we could give us a couple of options by next week on this calendar, definitely gives enough time to look our agendas to make sure we move forward with it. All right, council, anything else to add? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna move to the next item. All right, we have presentation in a minute. The city clerk will present the following minutes to mayor and council, May eighteen, twenty twenty-one work session, September twenty twenty-two work session, October sixth, twenty twenty-two legislation meeting. So you guys have this minutes in your package. Please submit any changes, additions, or subtractions to Melissa as soon as possible, so that way they go up for vote on our legislative session. And if there's some things that um, you know, let us know, so that way um, that way she makes the correct changes. Okay? Are we all good with that? Yes, okay, I see everybody shaking their head. Perfect. Now, moving on to item uh, number twelve, but before number twelve, can you move up the coming events, Melissa? Okay, so we have several coming events. I'm gonna read through them right before the the adjournment, okay? So the police department tour country will be October twenty-eight at the nature center. And can you do me a favor, Melissa, moving forward? Can you guys put time and locations in this thing, so it's easier for us to read through it? Uh, the Halloween parade will be October twenty-nine, and that'll be in front of Joe's Movement Emporium. The Veterans um, Day Flag Racing and Branch will be November eleven. Uh, the green team uh, will do a cleanup and overgrown the food area on the south side of the town on November twelfth. Thanksgiving basket tradition is November eighteen. Thanksgiving is November twenty-four. The city offices will be closed that day. Breakfast with Santa will be December ten, and the holiday family outreach that's led by the rec community will be do, will be also done December ten. Usually the breakfast is early and the holiday family outreach might be in the afternoon. The festival lights is not in this list, but I'm sure they'll let us know when it is. All right, perfect. Go move up. All right, um, council, uh, item number twelve, that'll be adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Hesitated heavily.
Uh, mayor, just wanted, um, before we adjourn, can I just, can I just, um, but um, there are two events on Saturday. The Mountaineer Elementary School PTO grounds committee um, is doing their cleanup, green up, or growing green with pride a week late because of the zombie run last week. And I think the food forest also has a cleanup um, at the, at ten o'clock on Saturday, um, October twenty-second as well.
Thank you. The other thing is like Mariner Elementary also has a movie night this uh, Friday, correct? And it's open for the whole community, even if you don't want to watch the movie, you could come and buy snacks and food to support the PTO efforts and also um, the food forest is gonna have Dia de los Muertos um, event on the thirtieth. Um, so that posted information, so I will share with uh, with the council, so I mean, with the communications, so that way they could share it out. And that is an effort between the volunteers from the food forest and um, Latinos in the outdoors. I apologize if I'm butchering their their names. It was brought out to us by um, by the food forest um, collective. Um, so they are gonna have an event, they're gonna have um, um, what's it called? Um, oh my goodness, I can't say this in English. Um, so they are gonna share the various customs about November first, which is Day of the Deaf, right? Which includes an altar and altar that, you know, people could bring pictures of their beloved ones that could um, be part of it. And they'll share culture, music, um, dancing is a celebratory um, event. All right. And um, Mariner PTO six P M, what's it? Um, Valerie, for the movie night?
Hotel Transylvania.
Mm-hmm, there you go. So come hang out, bring chairs, plenty of blankets, and it's a very nice family event. All right, thank you guys so much. Um, so good luck also to the parents from Cesar Chavez. They are gonna have the Latino Heritage Event this Thursday. Um, so looking forward to it and High Point, um, High Point is also having their event as well, so it's gonna be a very uh, great. Everybody had to move it around a little bit because of the zombie run, but uh, uh, thank you to all the parents that participated in the zombie run from both schools, schools were able to raise funds to be able to help them do the great work that they do. All right, okay, so uh, there was a, there was an adjournment, a second, we did have a discussion about uh, adjournment and other stuff. Uh, any objection, abstention? Hearing none. Uh, this meeting has continued at nine forty-three P M. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, folks.
All right. And bye.